Other. That makes me unable to be impartial in this. I think I need to recuse, but if anybody disagrees, I'm happy to.
Not yet. Let's get through this first.
Okay, my name is Patrick McFulgham, I'm a landlord there representing. Brass and Roaches who own property at three seventy-nine, who's a tonic. It's just east of its intersection with East Street on the north side. What they're proposing to do, part of either two lots, it was shown on the plan here. Apparently lot two A and two B is one lot. Okay, so you got this and this is one lot.
Okay, but this.
Exactly, yeah. And lot number one is already an existing lot. In law, they file it. Well, this is all lot one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Full green outline, just this the boundary of the wooded area, right?
Uh, yeah, the ones that's got the little circles wherever, that's just the wood line.
Okay, so this is all part of what lot one is.
Yeah. Alright, so what they're proposing to do is, uh, the kids who are lots two A and two B, would like to sell their lot, but they want some of the land to go back to the parents and create a buffer. So they're proposing to create lot number two B, which is not a building lot, and is going to be conveyed to their parents at loan lot number one. So we're not touching any of the frontage or setbacks or anything like that. It's just taking the backland, almost a little short of an acre, and conveying it back to the parents so they can then sell.
This is nothing but just showing your brother.
Yes, it's the.
So as I looked at the set there is.
Yeah.
Lot, whatever, comes across and goes all the way up here, so it's, it's this part that's coming back to.
No.
It's being cut out. Yeah.
Here, come back.
This is coming back, there's no, no.
This piece.
So it's like. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, a little boomerang.
That's two B. Together they mean lot two. Two B is gonna go over here to lot number four. Which is the parents' line, and they're gonna be able to sell lot number two A.
And so what's this, the zone?
R one A. Okay, so that's the only thing that I don't understand when you say then they're going to be able to sell it, I mean, they could sell it. With this.
Well, no, they want their parent.
Right, right, but I mean, that's not legal.
That's already, that's already built on you.
So they still, they still are going to have one acre.
Oh, sure, yeah, it's. No, it's over.
Point three.
Too big.
Yeah, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, this is lovely, aren't they? That's awesome, thank you. I love this.
It's straightforward, I just said curiosity. Why aren't you showing this merge with lot one?
I can't because it's under separate ownership, but we need some way to describe it from them to them.
Right, I see, yeah, first we have to separate.
Yeah, first. Then you can convey it, then it gets merged because it actually doesn't beat zoning, so zoning would automatically merge it in a tax office.
Because it's under current.
Yeah, once it comes under.
So it's getting split off as an unbillable.
Exactly.
So, yeah, so this line goes away essentially, right?
Yes, this line will go, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And you're gonna do that.
No, no, I don't think so, not, not unless they actually do something different, I don't think so, I think it'll just stay that way.
And make a motion to approve the, uh, subdivision that here in the form AS submitted.
So you're gonna need what?
Is there a second? Against maybe, you didn't just make a moment, yeah, to. A further discussion? Girls in favor? Nobody opposed today? Oh, no, Pam's on.
No, she's not.
Oh.
It's proud for the record, I just find the deal link that's on our posted agenda and it let me into the.
Okay, but so.
People tried around six apart and it had its.
Yeah.
But, uh, maybe I'd be able to.
So we could just list parents as. Parents as standing.
Right.
What were you doing with this?
Yeah.
Restoration of the. It's out there, I believe you've got a school building. And drawings, drawings exactly, we just end up in the garbage.
You gotta.
Might be able to sign it like.
I think you can, because what I have is like really thick, I wouldn't be able to read it anyway.
Look like I'm doing.
Nah, I think it'll write on it. I do.
I can see the running at.
No. I got my pen works out already.
I thought we had the same. You want, you want to speak everyone? Okay, no, 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 that'd be fine, I wouldn't, you know, I just looked at it. Is this so simple?
Yeah. Now if you could bake that too.
Is it open?
Eleven fifteen.
It used to, it used to be not okay, but it's okay now.
Actually.
It used to be, we used to use group printer and Boo wouldn't show up.
Right, right, right.
They don't do that anymore.
Okay.
A lot, I don't think has changed, but everybody else moved on.
Did you put the data on?
Yeah. Very strong.
These two. Okay, now, thanks for the tip, Glenn.
So what was Pam's?
No, it's, yeah, it is. It just worked for me. Yeah.
Let me just Skype her.
Well, I think if Pam's having a hard time getting in though, other people may be, so.
Gwen? What, David, Gwen, can you hear me?
Yes.
What David Maxson and I did is we wrote down the meeting code and the password, and we got in that way, so we just went to Zoom. And then.
Okay.
So maybe.
Both of those signings?
Yeah.
So these are the ones.
No, I don't know.
Yeah, we did, yeah, at the other end.
Yeah, let's just.
Yeah, that's a confusion.
Yeah, no. That guy, yeah. But this is. But this is different.
It is.
Yeah.
Probably the property.
I'm able to get into the property, right? I have, it's there, I think, and I just, but just clicking the link in.
Okay, we're all set, let's do the.
Okay, the next one here is, uh, Carol and Kelly, Kelly, and she owns property at seventy Bramble Lane. And her butter Daniel Hajar owns property at sixty-nine, and her other butter, Blossom owned property at sixty-four Bramble Lane, which is really at the very end of Bramble Lane.
That's lot one.
Yeah, she's lot number one, so, Carol's lot number one. And what, what they're proposing to do here is it's a private road. And so, uh, can Kelly's want to reconfigure their lot so they can reconfigure a house, uh, further away from the wetlands and lake and so on and so forth. So, uh, under mass general laws, the butters own half the road. And so what they're proposing to do is reconfigure the fee or the ownership under the road. So that allows them to, uh, better develop their new house site. So.
They're changing the end of the road.
They're changing.
Basically.
Yeah, they're basically changing the end of the road, there's this like hammer or square thing at the end of the road, uh, was never a turnaround road, but, uh, they're divvying it up, sort of, what they're proposing to do. So, uh, Carol will get lot number three, which is showing on the plan. Which used to be the old road. And.
So, so what was that part of originally?
It was just the road, it's showing on an older plan, I have a copy of it if you like to see it.
So. Right, so I see the road on it, but, where was her original property located? Cause I printed it out.
Let me do that first. Yeah, the original, the original property line is this.
That part.
Oh, so this is a new property one?
This would be new, so her original property.
Is what?
Correct, so that, so basically that, that, whatever that square was, is gonna go to her.
Be part of this lot.
That little piece here, where his shed is on, is gonna go to him.
And this.
And this little truck, this little rectangle is gonna be conveyed from her to him.
Right, okay.
So basically, that was just sort of a free-for-all zone of.
Yeah, what you're, what you basically have here, if I could put it in a nutshell here, you have three non-conforming lots. They're all non-conforming. Except for.
So this, so this lot three was part of the private way?
Yes, it was, and so was lot number four.
Okay, okay.
Okay, but their ownership extends to the center line there up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So.
Okay, so this lot here.
Yeah, they, exactly, they won't have a little slipper here, and they've all worked out a deal where they're gonna convey their interest in that lot number four to her and so on.
So since this is, this is a private road, it's not a public way, how does frontage work?
Well, here, here's the deal with frontage, and that's what I was trying to get at, is that you have three non-conforming lots. There's only one lot that meets frontage, and that's this lot. But they still meet frontage even after this is all done. All these other lots already don't meet frontage, they're already not conforming. So when we start, it's basically looking at, we're looking at like, uh, two non-conforming lots, we end up with two non-conforming lots.
But are we made by doing this, are they making it?
They're not.
Less conform.
It's. They're not making any new non-conformities.
Okay.
And, I mean, when you say you missed by an inch, you're missed by a mile, non-conformities and non-conformity. But we're not creating a non-conforming by doing.
It's not in a, the, the, the locus of the non-conforming is the same.
Is this, yeah, we're not creating a, a non-conforming.
Not to be, I guess, the other thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's, there's a lot too when you look at.
I mean.
Yeah, but it's kind of.
There's.
You know, had we, had we taken the frontage from when it met it and made it so it didn't meet the frontage requirement, then we created a non-conforming.
Right.
Here you got two neighbors that don't have the required frontage anyways, and are basically swapping it between themselves.
Okay.
Okay, what's the underlying acreage?
Uh, both, both of the lots, all the lots, all of them, all three involved do not meet the one acre zone. They don't meet it.
So neither would be potentially subdivisible on area, never mind frontage.
Right, so I mean, I got a lot of way to go, this is just a piece of a puzzle.
Right.
There's lots of permits to get and whatever wetland permits and.
And so.
It is, it's a very end.
Yeah.
Okay.
But one of the first steps is to swap this end of the road thing, so they can see what they have to work with. And this is one of the first steps.
No.
Pam, Pam, did you hear any of Patrick's, um, explanation of this second form A?
I abstained.
Chicken.
She enjoyed that.
So I made a motion to accept it.
Can you just do one quick?
Why don't you make?
Of it.
Why don't you make the second and then, and then have them?
Okay. To do the, alright, okay, alright, I would then, then, uh, yes, I second that motion.
Now further discussion.
Yeah.
So what did you want them to do, just go through the?
What we're doing again?
Yeah, yes.
The game.
Yeah, like the whole picture, because the idea is that we just make sure that everybody has.
So I think what he said, that the original border went like this. And this whole square here was part of the railway.
And, and so was lot number four.
Yeah.
Four, where his shed and his two sheds are, was part of the road, the private road.
Oh, wow.
See, this, this, all this right here was part of that road.
It's a lot one's border.
When it was laid out in nineteen forty.
Okay.
Okay, it was never built, people just went to driveways, whatever. So what they're proposing to do.
Yeah.
With the three owners that have a fee in this road, because a log is into the center line, is to, Carol, this house is gonna get lot number three. This rectangle, or rectangle here.
Square.
And where rectangle, yeah. Okay, that's that.
Yeah.
And then Dan, well, this house in his sheds, he's gonna get this piece of the road.
But the part within two buildings.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Yep. And, yeah, and part of the deal too is that Carol is gonna convey, Dan, lot number two, this little rectangle here, because he has hopes that he may someday get some kind of a garage or add a little bit to his, uh, his house on that side.
So she's conveying that to Dana?
Yeah.
So now lot two is gonna head up here like that.
Yeah, we'll come down, yeah, up here, over here, and then down.
Okay.
This gets them further away from the property lines, like.
They're actually moving the house away from the way, they're moving it toward. Right, exactly, more up there. Yeah.
I'm sorry, you moved it towards what?
They're moving it more toward this, this house.
Some room on the setback, which of.
This house, we can actually get a mirror off. That's why they're doing this, to get this up here.
Well, this, well, right now it's part of the road, but they all, but they all moved it like the center line.
Yeah, so this is now the new road.
Well, the road at the end right here.
The old one right there.
That's where it's gonna.
Okay, right there.
Yeah.
Okay. So that was the previous.
Yeah, that was the previous layout, they never did anything with it, it's just a driveway that comes in there, right? And that was since the nineteen forties that they did that. And it's private, so it's only the interests of the people at the end of this street.
Okay, I think this is, because I wonder why you have to do anything with this at all?
Um, well, it's.
Yeah, in order to get this into the registry, it needs.
Oh, we do.
There are certain things, it could either be a subdivision plan, which it's not.
Right.
Or it could be no new boundary lines, which it's not, or it can be a form A, which is conveying a piece of property.
Right, okay, so it's a record of the conveyances.
Yeah.
Right, anything else.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So Jim has a motion, Susan has a second.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, and.
So you need to speak for yourself. Hopefully shaking my home before it snows.
Yeah.
I know when I wake up in the morning, it's gonna be wet.
But, yeah, who, who negotiated or figured this out?
It wasn't, it wasn't asked, it was, it would definitely be, uh, I said. I know the lawyer that was involved was Lori Robbins, and, and so she had to work out something between all three parties. And so it worked out, and they're all good friends, and so they're just trying to resolve an issue that can make it better for all of them out there. Yeah, and I don't ever see it being a town vote, quite honestly, because they, they wanted to be private. Get all of them. There's the liar. There you go.
All the trees fall.
Yeah.
So, I'm thankful, people are still having a hard time doing the thing to do.
Pam's here? How did you finally, how did you finally get in Pam, did you?
The link never worked, and just going to Zoom and typing the meeting ID didn't work, but I finally downloaded the Zoom client, and I got it to work. So it was the internet connection, it was just being funky tonight, I downloaded Zoom. That way.
Three now, uh, Twitch people having a hard time access.
Repeat then?
And I, I'll let you respond to it, please.
I can inspect some people that. Yeah, so what do we do in this situation?
I'm not sure. I'm sure there's a contingent who would like us to postpone the meeting till another date and time certain. I would.
For that, postpone our question.
From Joel to.
Yeah.
He started a new Zoom meeting with a new date, not everybody would have their notice of that.
Right.
So.
But this could happen all over again, Zoom is not foolproof, although there are always, there seems to always be a way to get in, you just have to keep trying. Joel, what should we do?
And it's not snowing, and also, that's right.
It doesn't matter.
Say that again?
We have the option of people coming to them.
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, um, so Joel, I'll ask you, in this situation, what's, what's the best guidance here? Town Hall.
Right, um, so unfortunately, we don't have a clear answer to, uh, problems with technology, so there's a very clear answer, if your meeting room is filled to overflowing, you have to adjourn to a larger room. But it's not a parallel to say, the problem, I suppose the parallel might be if the town hall doors were locked and nobody could get in. But here we have a situation where some of us have gotten in, we see some members, the public, and, uh, some people like me and Pam and currently and uh, David Maxson have gotten in remotely, so we really don't have clear guidance as to a technology failure. Uh, I suspect, I mean, you have some pretty avid followers here, and I suspect they'll make a fuss if they say that they can't get in, as, as Gwen pointed out, they could drive down to town hall and come into the meeting room. So there's.
That's a true something, the link is working for some people.
So what's our, what's our, Jen, I mean, some of it, I think some of the correct answer here depends on what's our goal of actually next meeting, like if our goal is to have as inclusive a meeting as possible to get public comment, we'll get that tonight.
Well, the public comment is gonna take place near the end of the meeting. And, and the whole idea here was to go through.
Yeah.
Go through the bylaw, get Joe, get Joel's, take on the review of it, and then go through it and really explain it to everybody as well, so that's the other, the other, uh, key here.
But my point is being that what we're trying to do is inform our constituents, so then they'll be better able to vote on this when the vote comes up, so it seems unlikely that we're gonna accomplish that tonight, right?
Well, I, I was gonna add one other point, and that is, today, an ad was posted for your public hearing. So this meeting is really, uh, kind of a discussion for the planning board. And frankly, the planning board doesn't even have to hear from the public tonight, it's just the meeting of the planning board, of course, you can choose to allow the public to speak at the public hearing, they have the right to speak. So tonight, in a sense, is for the planning board members really more than the public. Obviously for the public to hear, but for the planning board members to kind of catch up on the changes that have been made to the bylaws since the last time you saw it, to discuss it and work it over, all of which you can do at the public hearing in two weeks. So tonight is, uh, as I said, really for the convenience, if you will, and the edification of the planning board members, and of course, for the public as well, but the public's gonna get their shot at it in two weeks.
Right.
Yeah, um.
And the public that's here tonight can still get their shot at it.
Yeah, and in the past, we sometimes tried to do an informal meeting discussion before a public hearing, um, at times, and we could think about this meeting tonight as that, you know, kind of a preliminary discussion, uh, before we actually have the public hearing. Um, I don't think it would hurt us to, to continue. May I just?
Go ahead.
Gwen, when, um, so the link isn't working for people have, is, was there a way to broadcast the alternative way of getting on, which was to put in the meeting number?
Um, well, I don't have everybody's email, but as people have been emailing me, I've been trying to respond and give them the full information.
Is it possible to put it on the, the website?
Yeah, we can try and do that.
And, and maybe wait?
But I, I guess for me, if I, it seems to me, if it's gonna be constructive for us to get some procedural stuff out of the way, like, you know, as Joel suggests, any questions that we might have, that we won't then have to ask next meeting, this meeting makes sense, but if the goal of this meeting is to include the public, it doesn't seem like that's gonna have a really effective way in this meeting.
Can I also comment that we have, um, at least one person emailing in to both me, I don't know how she has my email, and Gwen, um, asking that we postpone the meetings, this is Courtney Gilardi. Um, she's saying I have multiple people calling me telling me they cannot access the meeting as the link is not working. It's been thirty-five, the meeting is promoted as a hybrid meeting, and yet the link provided has not worked, please postpone the meeting until everyone has access, I have downloaded Zoom and tried from my phone and another computer, and it's still not working, so I just wanted to make sure that correspondence.
I should try the alternative method.
She says she's downloaded Zoom and tried.
No, but the alternative.
There's a dialing.
We need to Zoom. Or there is the dialing, use your phone, but then you have to use it.
But it doesn't, it doesn't matter, right, because some people are gonna get it, and some people aren't.
Right, and there will be a party available. Of what?
But some people are gonna get it, and some people aren't gonna get it, so either we feel like there's some stuff that would be constructive for us to get out of the way tonight, because it's gonna make the next meeting a little easier, we'll be better informed. That I think makes some sense to do, but if, if the goal is to include the public, we're not gonna get that tonight, so I'm asking a question, you know, what do we think we're trying to accomplish tonight? And if the answer is yes, there's a couple of questions that have been really nagging, maybe we should knock those out of the way. Like, the answer is no, we're just, you know, talking through this, reading through it, so everybody understands that it's just not gonna happen tonight, we're just, it's unfortunate, but it's not gonna happen.
Right, so what, so I think the main reason for me for tonight was to hear uh, Joel's report on his review of the bylaw, and that's constructive for this board. And then we can, we can adjourn after that if we, if we so desire.
And we're not voting to approve anything, and we're.
Right.
Okay, and anybody who wants that understanding can get it by listening to the recording, and the only thing they might not be able to do is ask Joel a question at the end of the night.
I think then we would need to continue, have a meeting next Tuesday, so you could vote to have this article, um, be on a special time meeting, and approve more in language.
Yeah.
Could we also, um, not have it be hybrid? Um, because this is too disruptive to our, our process to, to have these technological problems, this is the second time. process to, to have these technological problems. This is the second time.
Says, says the lady's voting in.
Well, I mean, it looks beautiful on the screen if you get in. I do want to say that, but if we do it not as a hybrid, we can be assured that we'll have the meeting and, you know, we can walk everywhere. It can be kind of like the, the info session too, you know, we can.
I, I just don't, I, I think that as a practical matter, there's no putting that genie back in the bottle. Um, once, you know, once you've started having public meetings, hybrid, I, I think you're, you know, essentially bound to, you know, continue offering that as an option.
Uh, other boards don't do it.
Well, it's not as enlightened as we are or foolish.
I, I think it's, I think there's a real benefit to having a hybrid meeting. I think it's more accessible, but I think tonight is a real just unfortunate example.
Although I think then in the meeting notices with the hybrid information, we need to like have in the meeting notice. Number one, try the link. Number two, go to Zoom, type it in, type it in. Number three, log in, log down. Number four, if you can't get in any of these ways, we take no responsibility to get in your car and come to town hall.
Or dial in.
Or dial in on the phone or dial in on the, so we could, I think we need to then put that all on every meeting notice every single time because even I didn't think, I didn't think to like type the number in.
David Maxson, a technical point of order, if I may. I, I tried to log in using all three methods at the beginning and none of them worked. Uh, and then it started to work. I don't know, a little bit somewhere between eight, eight minutes and quarter after it started to work for many of us. And when it started to work, some of us had gone in on the app. Uh, I think Pam had said that. And for me, it, uh, it worked at that, on that try when I went in using the, the login data on the, on the webpage. So I think whatever it was that was not functioning began to function somewhere around quarter after the hour. And, uh, I've seen some other people have logged in since then. So I think maybe the assumption that it is still broken is not necessarily a, a, a correct assumption.
Well, we have people emailing saying that they can't get in. They keep trying even after I got in.
Well, I think, I think we have to assume that they can. So, okay, let's, let's, let's query Joel.
Right. So, so all right. So before we start with that. So this board received an email, I believe, from Mr. Barrow just before the, the meeting, uh, about a, a possibility of, uh, open meeting law violation. And I want, I want Joel Bard to address that.
Was that your point earlier?
Yes. So, so go, so go ahead, Joel.
Thank you. Yes. And Gwen was good enough to forward that to me. So I have the statute in front of me and I'm going to read the one sentence that addresses, uh, that writer's issue head on. So the
Can we hear the issue first?
Yeah. Can we have, do we have the email? What the, what was?
The issue is today at, uh, one o'clock, they finally released the ordinance, not before.
By the chair, sir, and you to raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. We have asked to hear from our town council.
Yeah, you can't just speak out.
So in, in a sentence, uh, Glenn, if you want to read some of it, but there were several issues raised, but the open meeting law issue that was raised was an allegation that the open meeting law notice was incomplete because it did not attach the bylaw that's being discussed. So now I'll read the one sentence right out of the open meeting law that as far as I'm concerned, answers the question. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board. So in chapter thirty eight, section twenty, in the twenty sub paragraph B, the sentence says notice. And so that's the open meeting, open meeting law notice. Notice shall be printed in illegible, easily understandable format and shall contain the date, time and place of such meeting and a listing of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the meeting, period. So there is no requirement that the open meeting law notice attach any substance or content, simply a description of the topics to be discussed. As far as I'm concerned, that definitively answers the question.
It doesn't, it doesn't go on to say, and if there's any bylaw that should be included.
It does not say that. It doesn't say.
Paul G has his hand.
Well, I want to, I want to address the board first and, you know, if there's any other questions or concerns.
No. No, I think that was the answer. I always understood this correctly.
Yeah, it just needs to be the agenda posted and that's it.
And I would also say that, um, it's my understanding from my former position as chair and being involved in this is that on the municipality of Lenox, we don't even have to put it on the, on the website, but we do. The meeting notice, all it has to do is go in that glass case in town hall, and that's the legal requirement that we have to meet. Everything else is our working hard to put stuff in front of people as we have it available.
Right.
On the internet.
So I'll, this, Paul G has his hand up. Um, please identify yourself and tell us where you are from, where, what your address is, and then ask your question.
If you're. Thank you very much. I'm Paul G, Sausalito sixty two Harrison Avenue, Sausalito, California. What is the goal?
Yeah. What's your, what's your last name?
G E E.
Oh, okay.
Paul G. Yeah. All right. So, um, all, all, all I want.
Do I stop you for a second?
Sure.
In the, the annual meetings, if you're not a resident, you have to get recognized by the people who.
Well, that's, that's a town meeting. I don't think that.
I would recognize, but just want to make sure. That's fine. Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I'll keep this nice and short.
What his issue is in one sentence rather than a full presentation.
Yes, of course.
Just, yeah, make it, make it.
Really short, really short. Okay. Just let me talk and I'll make it really short. Okay. I appear.
Slower, sir.
Yes, I will. I appear all over the country. I observe many, many towns doing what you're doing. And I participate. I li, I work in my, my own town, gives you seventy two hours to review all things that are going to be talked about. The reason is it's a government of buying for the people. So you want to give the public the full benefit of being able to read, understand and analyze to bring the best information forward to you. We were only given from one o'clock today on. That is insufficient. And so all I'm saying to you is in a government of buying for the people where you want to have an unbiased presentation, you want to give the public sufficient time to do the proper analysis so you can have the best information to make your being going forward. Today, in just a few hours, I did a lot of really good work that you could benefit from if I could share my screen at some point in this meeting. But that's not enough. You need, we need a little more. We want you to arrive at a good decision. We want the best deliberation. That's the whole important point. When you say just a listing of the topics, here, any judge can interpret that as they wish. Hiding the actual substance from the public should not be the goal of the staff. And if you look at your own precedents, you will find that when you weren't busy to the last minute, you did offer the public more time to review things than this. So, you know, your own precedent shows that you do it.
Mister Chair.
Wait, hold on. So I'm learning as we go here, but it seems to me you're asking for seventy two hours notice. And when's our public hearing?
On the twenty ninth, two weeks from.
Two weeks. And we're giving fourteen days notice because.
No, I'm talking about this meeting, this meeting.
But just this, okay, Paul, I listened to you and you listened to me, right? This meeting is introducing the, the, uh, bylaw. And in two weeks, we're having a public hearing around the bylaw. So you will have two weeks to review the bylaw and bring anything forward that you'd like to that public meeting. So the, the, the suggestion, which I find a little offensive, that we're trying to hide something is just untrue. If you would like to offer some comments from California, I'm sure we'd be happy to listen to them, but don't tell us we're trying to sweep something by because we got fourteen days before we're having a full public hearing where people can talk at length about what they want.
And this is a full public meeting and the same laws and rules apply.
Well, yeah, no, 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 they don't. No, they don't. And Joel Bard will, town council will correct me if I'm wrong. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing. So this is a working meeting of the planning board. Where we, where we discuss, deliberate and, and ask questions of, uh, the consultant we have, town council. Um, we are not obligated to take comment, uh, from the public in these meetings.
And, and in fact, we're obligated not to talk about this outside of this meeting. And that's incredibly frustrating because that slows progress down. But so here we are, we're talking about it and because it's a good idea and the law, you guys get to watch us do it. But don't tell us that we needed to give you this bylaw before this meeting because you're getting it fourteen days before the meeting where we're more than welcoming your comments. This is a working session for us to understand what we're going to present then, but we need to work on it.
Open bodies are open bodies, public meetings, public meetings that all apply. Take a look at the law.
And that's why you're here.
Mister Chairman, I, Mister Chairman, I, um, suggest that we mute all, everybody on the phone except those that are participating in this meeting. Otherwise we're like opening ourselves up for continuous interruption.
Yeah, real. I agree, Pam. So I want to hear from, from Joel Bard and then that's, that's, that's it. So then we're going to continue.
I have a kind of a point of order question myself. Um, I am curious as to whether you is actually a voter in the town of Lenox?
That's why I asked if he wants to recognize.
Oh, did you know that?
Well, he said he was from California.
In California.
He's not a voter in Lenox.
Okay.
That's why, but I don't care. We'll recognize him. But, but Thomas said we didn't actually need to recognize. Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, Mister Chair. So, uh, really, I'm just repeating some of the comments that you members have made. And that is, uh, first, just going to the comment about California law. We're not in California. California has a lot of terrific laws. Uh, so do we. Ours is different. Our law categorically says forty eight hours, a listing of topics, period. So as one of the members said, you're not hiding anything. The law doesn't require that you say anything more than list the topics. And that's what most towns do. And as the point was made, the public hearing is going to be held in two weeks. So all of the residents have two weeks to review the bylaw and make comments. And I'll add that anybody who wants to submit written comments over the two weeks can do so and members can read them or not, and they can be the subject of, uh, of discussion at the public hearing. I suggest that rather than waste a lot of time arguing about how good or bad our public, uh, public records, sorry, our, our open meeting law is that you move on. It's kind of silly at this point to continue to beat the dead horse. And.
That's right. I, I agree. So, so with that, Joel, um, why don't you, you had a chance to review the bylaw and go through it, um, a couple of weeks ago or last week. Um, so I'd like to hear from you on, on what your, your review of it is, comments, uh, and anything like that.
I'd be happy to do that. I fortunately have my marked up copy here. And so what you see has the benefit of those markups. And if Pam or Gwen or David Maxson, uh, sees that I missed anything, please jump in. So I'm going to go through it page by page. Some were really kind of minor, not worth talking about, I don't think. But the first comment I made, and actually let me, uh, I'm also, I, I treated out both copies. So the first change, if you go to the use table on page three. Sorry. Yeah. Talk, uh, on page three. The first, uh, the first zoning district, under, sorry, not under zoning, just whatever the use, the word colocation. So, uh, we've added a parenthetical note. So colocation requires a special permit from the Board of Appeals, but the parenthetical note is new and it says unless the colocation qualifies as an eligible facility. Because when you get into the body of the bylaw, you'll see that eligible facilities, well, you'll see it at the bottom of that use table. Uh, it's not a special permit, but it's just the administrative approval. Also by the, uh, just the administrative approval. So that's the first substantive change that I suggested. Then moving on, by the way, I, I thought the bylaws were all was very good. It just, well, you'll, you'll see for yourselves, but I don't think I made any hugely significant changes on page seven originally. Let me make sure. Yeah, it's on page six now. You'll see a table. The, the table is the location preferences and at the bottom of the table is a brief paragraph. And, uh, I suggested that a word be added. There we go. Be added twice. I'll just read the first two lines and point it out. In addition to the foregoing, before any new tower is approved, the applicant must demonstrate that it is not feasible or effective. So before it just said not feasible. And I suggested that the word effective be added because feasible is often interpreted to mean physically feasible. And it could also mean, uh, technologically feasible, but I think the point is not only feasibility, but effective from the point of view of the, the wireless service provider. So we've added the word or effective there. And as well as in the last line, you'll see the first three words say feasible or effective to locate the facility. So.
Hey Gwen, I, I wanted to put a document is not scrolling maybe. Yeah.
But so go ahead, sir.
So if, if we have a question on this, should we wait until Joel finishes or?
What, what's your preference, Joel?
Just a question about a little tiny.
Yeah, it might make sense to take, take them off as, as we go along.
Yeah. When I looked at this table and it says third preference, this seems to be after a word change. A little one mark is a, is a footnote or something that I was curious about whether it was just a, a mistake or where is it? It's in, um, it's on page six with under, under third preference over in the next column.
I noticed that as well, and I think it's apocryphal or something. So I think we take it out, take out the footnote. The footnote one under third preference, Gwen. In the text.
Yeah, that's a mistake.
David Maxon here.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that probably was a footnote, um, that was originally explaining a substantial change is a technical term and it's defined by the FCC. So if you want to have some kind of a footnote like that to let the reader know that there, there is specific meaning to that term, you might put in a footnote to that effect.
Oh, you know what, David? We used to have the definition on this page with the footnote and then we moved it into the additions per se. So we moved it. We, so I think that's now in the definition section. So we don't need the footnote.
Yeah. So, so, okay. So if that's, if that's in the definitions, then the, then the, the two words of the phrase should be italicized. Yeah.
Yeah.
I know we've done that.
Is that why new towers capitalized? I think so.
Yeah, we have erratic capitalization in this document.
So what, what, okay. So let's call that italicizing that. So we're going to italicize substantial change. Yeah.
Any, any word, any word. Has a definition.
So I say new talent.
If it's, if it's defined, we need to.
Yeah, that's, if it's got a definition.
If you want it to be as defined in the English dictionary, then don't.
Is it defined? I think it is. Well, yeah.
I would suggest capitalization because we have many, many words that are repeatedly used. And they are in definitions. Be better just to, I think it'd be disconcerting to see so much italicization.
Okay. So just go with capitalization.
Yeah, we can do that as a housekeeping cleanup thing.
The building code uses italic.
I mean, I feel like we should try to be consistent with other boards. Well, let's take a look at what consistency we have within the.
Anyway, we need to make sure that it's defined.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Joel.
Okay, so the next comment was there's a section. Um, let's see, let me just find it here. Uh, at the top of page eight, there's a section called new towers. So that calls for notice being sent to owners within six hundred feet. Uh, but there's also a reference to chapter forty-eight, section eleven. Chapter forty, section eleven requires a notice be sent to a butters and a butters within three hundred feet. So legally, I don't have a problem with adding the six hundred feet. I just wanted to be clear that the bylaw is not trying to override the statute. So just made a simple addition of language here. So the first line says mailed notice to neighbors. All new towers shall require that mailed notice comma, in addition to meeting the standards of general is chapter forty-eight, so that we added that phrase in addition to meeting the standards to make clear that this isn't looking to override uh chapter forty-eight, section eleven. It's just saying that property owners within six hundred feet will get noticed even if they're not entitled to notice under the zoning act. And that's, that's perfectly fine. In other words, there's nothing wrong with being more generous, if you will, than the zoning.
And can you say that again, Joel, just so we're all clear on it, because I don't think I knew this before. An essential permit requirement, the notice goes to every, all landholders within three hundred feet. And all the butters to them or?
No, it goes, it goes to all the butters. So they're, you know, immediate of butters. And then a butters to a butters within three hundred feet. So take the rural parts of Lenox. So let's say the a butter owns forty acres. So that means that there are no butters to a butters within three hundred feet because um sorry, there there will be um, there will be one a butter because a at the uh edge of their boundary, there'll be one a butter within three hundred feet, presumably only one, whereas in urban areas, uh you may have several. It's just, it's just, it it's a definition in the statute of um who gets noticed. So this would in, say, the downtown areas of Lenox would mean that perhaps several orders of a butters, if you will, will get noticed because they'll be within six hundred feet, but they won't necessarily be a butters to a butters.
Got it.
To, if if they're small lots. Then um we talked about at the bottom of the same page, I I don't think we ended up making any changes here, but it's worth just a brief discussion. And that's the section on setbacks. And the discussion, the concern I had was whether um this was too restrictive. So the bylaw uh in my opinion is a matter of substance. And David Maxson is the, you know, the more experienced person in terms of seeing what all of this looks like on the ground. But you know, we see a fair amount of it as well, thanks mainly to litigation. But you do want some flexibility for situations where it makes sense to be flexible. Because say visibility may be an issue and height may be an issue, but there may be a location that makes perfect sense and nobody really can see it. Uh, so in any event, in this case here, it had to do with the setback. And the minimum setback distance, as it says here, to the nearest residential property shall be two hundred and fifty feet. And then uh the load, it says, is part of the process. The ZBA by super majority can reduce the setback to no less than one point five times the tower height based on certain findings. So we had a discussion as to whether that was sufficiently flexible. Really, just as a practical matter to allow for towers that would otherwise make a lot of sense. And and what in our discussion, I was convinced, I was the one who expressed the concern. I was convinced that if there is a set of facts where it makes a lot of sense, but some, but that one point five times is still not good enough. The person could also apply to the zoning board for a variance. At the same time as they're applying for their special permit, they could apply for a height variance from the zoning board and of course make their case that uh or the setback variant, sorry, it's not a height issue, it's a setback here. That the uh it makes sense under the particular topography, lay of the land, the development and so forth. And the zoning board will decide, you know, in its discretion whether or not to grant that variance. So we didn't make any changes, but I just wanted to explain that we had that discussion. And uh I was convinced by uh Pam and Gwen and David that there was no need to make any further changes and pointing out that it could be resolved if the factors merit could be resolved by the grant of the variance.
And I would say it wasn't really me and David advising or anything like that. I think I just felt like we had this, I I convey, it felt, we had this discussion as a board. And I thought that the board felt comfortable with the way it was written. So if you, if anyone disagrees with that, please um speak up.
And and actually, I should point out that the earlier draft, because you're not seeing it, and this somewhat prompted the discussion. There had been a clause or a numbered section that raised the issue. Should we have a different waiver possibility and so forth? So that's in part what prompted the discussion. So we ended up all being comfortable with the way you had it uh in the last draft. Then um so let's see, we looked at tower replacement um again. Yeah, I'm looking at my notes. I don't see that we made any changes here. It just so the, just so you know what you're looking at, so tower replacement is.
I think we discussed tower replacement, but we didn't change it. You were asking about what is it restrictive or something like that?
Correct.
Or e, what, less restrictive?
Well, so that just so you, you can be looking at, it's on page twelve, it's section eight, eighteen, nine, tower replacement. There it is. So I, among other things, I raised the point, I guess it's worth uh raising it now with all the members of the board, just to keep in mind that when someone wants to replace a tower, they may have, depending on the circumstances, certain rights as a non-conforming tower. And so, so there was no need to have the bylaw address that because anybody who's got a non-conforming structure or non-conforming use for that matter has certain rights under the zoning act and it's captured in the town's bylaw to make changes to their non-conforming structure, so long as it's found not to be substantially more detrimental than they were. So in the end, again, after a brief discussion, we uh, I didn't see a need to change anything. But had wanted simply to um to discuss that, the the overlay, if you will, the overlay of the state law that creates certain rights for property owner. Then on the application section. So what we discussed here more than anything was, in fact, I think really all our discussion was, was the, if you look at page thirteen, um the top of the page, application. It says all applications, Glenn, can you just scroll up to that top of page thirteen? There we go. See that first line says all applications shall include. So the way it was written, it largely uh had all of these requirements also apply to eligible facilities, which are entitled to a a more streamlined review, if you will. So the way we addressed that was to find what we did, but we added a clause.
When, right at the bottom of this, yeah, keep going, Gwen. It's B, remember?
All right, under eligible facilities. So if you look at that eligible facilities request, that first line is new. Saying eligible facilities request shall not be required to meet the requirements of, and then it's giving some subsections that appeared above section ten A. Uh, A.
That should be A one.
Could be A.
A one, it should be A one.
So those are the very detailed plans, the requirement for that. A two are photo simulations. A six is provide a narrative and additional exhibits is necessary to demonstrate uh fulfillment of and compliance with the criteria outlined in all sections, including and and more. And then the seven, oops, A seven is a report supporting technical data demonstrating the following. And that runs to a full page. So we added that essentially to make clear that an application for an eligible facility uh need not be as detailed as an application uh for a full-blown new tower and so forth.
So just a a question on that. So why would we want not want to have them submit a photo simulation for? I can understand the set of plans because it's not a new, whole new location. But but uh uh an eligible facilities request is if they're, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe it's, you know, the tower that already exists with with an array on it, the tower that's that's wants to add another array, right? So maybe higher than the array that's there already.
Tower can be increased up to twenty feet, right?
It it is, David, I think we um, we, we misread that. I I said A one, um, actually, A one is one of the ones we wanted to include and not exclude. So uh I'm not sure what, yeah, I'm not sure what, what that rogue uh first entry was supposed to represent. Um, we had talked about not doing photo simulations because you're, you're attaching to an existing facility. Um, we talked about whether or not to include design, but design really is covered with plans. So one and three can stay in. We're concerned about radio frequency emissions and noise, four and five, so those are not excluded. Uh, and then six and seven were things that were um kind of over the top as far as what the FCC expects of an applicant, uh uh an application for an eligible facilities request. So those are excluded. So I think it might just be two, six and seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over the top, can you explain that?
Yeah, so.
So wait, is A one in in there?
Right, we should not exclude A one. I don't think it was ever our intent.
Oh, so delete that comment. So what, so what, what is A? So let's, we take out that eight, eighteen, ten A is the whole thing.
It's the whole thing and
So just.
Yeah, I I think it's just a editorial debris.
So Gwen, where it says eight, eighteen, A, delete that. Cause that's.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, no, in the, in the exclusions. Just that little snippet.
So so Jim, Jim's got a couple of questions.
Well, wait, hang on a second. So it's not just the A, but that first eight, eighteen, ten, A.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah, that would eliminate all of them.
Yes, yes.
So you use.
They will not be required to meet two, six and seven.
Right.
Correct, David?
Correct.
Everything else they must provide.
Yes, everything else pertains to the town's uh uh interest in uh uh, you know, safety and and code compliance.
I still have a couple of questions. Go ahead. You use the term over the top in describing two sections. Whose numbers I did not catch. Can you completely expand on why those aren't over the top and what you mean by that?
Yeah, uh, yes, um, the FCC has specific um requirements that you, there are certain things you may not ask for um, from an eligible facilities request applicant. And six and seven um are things that basically you may not ask for. I mean, you, you have no, uh, no purpose in in asking for them. Uh, so that's the process of narrowing this application um checklist to the things that you are allowed to ask for when it's an eligible facilities request.
Okay, and then the other question I have had to do with the uh, you know, we're concerned about sound, we're concerned about emissions. But we don't need to worry about the photo. I don't see the harm in including the photo. I understand that the eligible facility is essentially a minor expansion of an existing facility, but wouldn't the photos demonstrate that?
Uh, generally, the plans will have elevation views. You'll be able to see what's changed. Um, rather than having to send somebody out and and uh do a full photo simulation uh set. Um, yeah, yeah, you know, you could go either way on that. I just uh was trying to be very careful not to overburden the applicant to the point that they might uh push back.
Also, it's a must approve, cannot deny. So it, the very fact exists, they can raise the height. I mean, I don't know what the point of the photo would be because we can't.
Because the point would be that we have the photos when the townspeople want to know why we don't have the photos.
Because we, because they don't, they don't play into any decision making.
Uh, they serve the top people's concerns.
I think it is, I think that's kind of, it goes back to like, why do this special permit process versus create kind of a administrative approval process for these instances where we can't deny but have to approve. I think sounds like what we're hearing from some of the public is that they want a lot of information upfront and they want the town to have a lot of information at our fingertips when making these decisions or reviewing, because we're not really making a decision. Um, when we're reviewing the request. And so it would just give people more information, even if the changes aren't really dramatic and might not be very consequential. It might make them feel better and feel like they have a lot of information and they won't be surprised by it or taken off guard.
Let me, can I?
I think that's kind of a policy question though. Is if we're doing administrative approval, what does that look like? What's that process?
So I would advocate that we include the photos.
Can I ask?
I have to ask a question. I'm gonna just blurt like everyone else does and not follow any procedural law. Okay.
I've read it a long time.
Frustration, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Eligible facilities request, is there a reason why it it's using the word shall and not are or may? So am I correct in understanding that were we to require eligibility, eligible facilities to provide any of the information under two, six and seven, we would be in violation of FCC?
Well, you you'd be going beyond, you'd be in violation of the bylaw. But the reason we've written it that way is, yes, you would run the risk of violating the FCC requirement. So as a general kind of as a general kind of umbrella concept, the FCC regulations prohibit unreasonable requirements. And so the question is for a a minor eligible facility, what's reasonable or unreasonable? So it, the violation would be of your own bylaw, so not a huge deal, right? Although not not to be taken lightly. But the bigger issues that's there to avoid running into potential litigation issues with FCC violation.
So to Jim's point about what the mockup or the photo, blah, blah, blah.
Photo simulation.
Thank you, photo simulation. It currently in our bylaw, that is not required. And for eligible facilities, that is not required.
In our current. Current bylaw, he even think addresses eligible.
Okay, okay. Okay, so let me, let me just follow that a little further. If to Jim's point, if if we in some circumstances thought it would be beneficial to have a photo simulation, is there, is that? Can we do that? And how do we rewrite rewrite this?
So can I address that? Because I was gonna make this point, if I can. Gwen, can you bring up at the very top of page thirteen where it says all applications shall include plans? So I wanted to walk through that and Gwen, if you put your course cursor, sorry. About halfway down or more, it says, and detailed plans as necessary to illustrate site development, wetland, river buffers, landscaping, trees covered, et cetera. And here we go. Elevation drawings and details about the ground equipment and the tower mounted equipment and any other information the applicant or the town determines is appropriate for showing the proposed development. So Jim, I mean, you'd you'd have a sense from your profession. I mean, elevation drawings presumably would show some detail of the additional structure.
I don't disagree, I don't, Joel, I don't disagree, but here we are reviewing a bylaw two weeks before we're gonna present to the public so that we can ask our questions and we're allowing the public to participate in this conversation. And we've been accused of hiding it. Okay, so I'd rather have the photo documentation so nobody can accuse me of trying to pull a fast one.
Well, I I.
And I would object to one word in your language, which was your word, the word was as necessary. Because I've been in meetings where the applicant says, we don't think those drawings are necessary. And then the board goes, yeah, they're not necessary.
But that's why I read the last clause or other information the applicant or the town determines is appropriate for showing the proposed development.
That they need to provide the drawings, not as necessary. Just provide the drawings, right?
Well, this gives, this gives the board more power to ask for additional inform. So this is, this is, this is.
Right, I think. And I think it could be interpreted, as Jim was saying, it could be interpreted either way. So the only language change is in is back down under eight eighteen ten B. That sentence, eligible facilities request shall not be required to meet the requirements of eighteen ten A six and eight eight eighteen ten A seven, and that's it. Everything else they've got a, they've got a. Well, we'll remove the two.
Yeah.
Because two is the, and that would require them to include photo simulation. Six and seven, apparently, we can't, you know, we would run foul of federal law for.
So so to add five more feet to a tower or twenty more feet to a tower, they're gonna have to do another balloon test to get the photo simulation, because that's what it says.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
David, you're muted.
Thank you. I'll try again. Yeah, it I I I if you have an existing tower, and I think that's probably the primary concern here, and it's being increased in height. The tower, when the photo, in a new photograph taken for this purpose, the tower is the reference and you can easily calculate what the additional height is based on the what's it, you know, what you're taking a picture of. So I think I think that's, it doesn't need a balloon test per se. It can be just photo simulated. The other thing is that these eligible facilities requests also apply to things like buildings that have antennas on top of them. And so, yes, you might want to see a photo simulation of what the next guy is proposing. Maybe maybe the plans are not enough. You know, my my goal was to streamline it and give you the option to ask for photo simulations. But if you feel that it's important to keep that in there, yeah, I don't, I don't see any harm in that.
Yeah, like you said earlier, you know, we either way, so we just take that out. And then it's required.
Facilities, we cross out the A two.
Correct.
All right, so that leaves us just ten, ten six and ten seven, yeah, yeah. Yeah, more information is better than less.
Right.
Man, what happened here?
What, right?
So we've got these old comments in here, Gwen. Yeah.
Deleting eight point eighteen point ten A and deleting eight point eighteen point ten point eight.
Eight two, correct. So before we continue, can we just back up a couple of pages to to page twelve? So under under eight eighteen eight eligible facilities request, there is a line that's highlighted, three administrative approval, explain steps of administrative approval. So is there more verbiage that has to be added there?
Joel said that we could put it, that information in the application for an eligible facilities request. But but Gwen said she wanted to talk about it, so she left it in here as a talking.
I have a question about that for our app, because that's mentioned elsewhere in the bylaw, the application for. And so that's something we can make after, like, we will have to make that.
Have to generate the form. Generate the application.
And I guess from the planning board, I would just want guidance on like what you want the admin approval process to look like.
Yeah.
I think the, the question was always whether we wanted there to be a notification provision, a notification to a butters or butters just in three hundred feet, for example, like a special permit or whether it's just a public whether it it just a, what it was it called, a zoning board hearing? Are those just called hearings? Whether it's a hearing of the zoning board? Or some kind of, I don't know if you call it a hearing of the zoning board or a an A of the zoning board. So what do we make it? You know, do we do we require notification or not?
Well, we we talked about this before, essentially being a modification of a special permit. So I think, you know, the notifications to a butters and all that should should probably follow suit as as if it was a modification to a special permit. I know it's not, but you know, I think if you know, there were a tower nearby me that was gonna be modified in some way, yeah, it's an administrative approval, but I like to kind of know a little bit about what they're doing, so.
Do we go six hundred feet or three hundred feet on the modifications?
Why not just be consistent and keep it the, keep it the same, six hundred feet?
I agree.
Yeah.
But now again, and by the way, I I don't have any problems with what you're saying. The question is, do you hold on that and put it in the application form? You know, somebody applies and they get the form to fill out and then they'll also get a cover sheet that says there'll be a hearing and notice will go to this and such people. You needn't put all of that, you can put it in the bylaw. But you can have a separate set of conversations about what that application is gonna look like. And by the way, the biggest difference between this process and a special permit, as you probably know, special permit, you have to hold a hearing within sixty days. And then you have, not you, but the special permit granting authority has to make a decision within ninety days of the close of the public hearing. So if the public hearing lasts two months, it means it could be, you know, a half year process. So the idea here is it's a streamlined process, but there's no reason why you can't have a public hearing with two weeks' notice and give notice to a butters and all of that. That's, you know, not a huge time delay and then then the board has the hearing and then, you know, as a month or so to act on it.
So Gwen, Gwen said I put all this into the application form, right? Gwen, we're not gonna put it in the bylaw.
What's the reason not to put it in the bylaw? I I heard that we could have it in either place. But I don't understand the good reason not to have it in the bylaw. Because, so I would say that, you know, I'm an architect and I do what I do, but when I go to a town to do what I want to do, I go look at their bylaw. And sometimes if something's like buried in a funny place, you don't see it. But if the first place you start is always the bylaw, so why wouldn't we want it in the bylaw? It would be like the one source. And then, you know, I don't know, maybe a link on the webpages and functioning, you don't see that form, or maybe you come down to get the forms, but they don't have them that week, because it's a small town and sometimes things like that happen. Why wouldn't we want it just in one place?
It strikes me that if you're going into the application, you know what you want to do and therefore you would get the bylaw and the application at the same time.
But again, what's the bad reason?
Procedurally, if it's in the bylaws, isn't that a lot more difficult to change if you want to make make some changes in the process?
That could be a reason.
And so, you know, I don't think it's worth tying our hands, especially given that it's somewhat of an unknown. And, you know, but I I think reference to it should be in the bylaws that it's a separate application available, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, absolutely. So that line, that line three would say something to to the effect of you know, the administrative approval process is outlined in the application, you know, blah, blah, blah.
You can tell it's getting, getting late.
I mean, we do have an application section at the beginning, eight eighteen two, it references both applications.
For the consensus is to leave that information, the detailed level in the application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was thinking more along the lines of what what Jim was thinking, you know, just it's it's in the bylaw, the general public can see it and all that, but but you should raise good points about if there's, it has to be a minor change in that application
Right.
or whatever, and it's all in the bylaw, then it's back to town meeting, wholesale change, and it's a my, if it's a minor thing. Right, yeah, okay.
So this will have a sentence or two to do something. Indicate the location of the information. Okay.
Again, the app, the applications though are mentioned at the beginning of the bylaw, that they exist and.
Have a mockup of the applicants for town. Just so people have all the information in front of them.
Do we have?
I think we have templates.
Okay.
Previous efforts.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And I'm sure.
Yeah, okay, yeah. There were a couple of oddball little things on this, like there's a missing period somewhere. I'll just let you know when.
So so Joel, go, continue on, we're.
Did we address that necessary drawings? Where was that?
Yeah.
That was the photo simulation.
No, no, documents.
Any other documents?
Be necessary.
That's separated by a semicolon from the rest of it.
We're just, I heard Joel read it, but I will see where it is.
Page thirteen.
Well.
At the very top.
Was in the section on required plans. It's under application, it's number one.
And it's pretty descriptive, tells, you know, what what they have to provide. And then at the end of all that, it's.
It's a plus and any information.
It doesn't say any, it just, it's a semicolon and it says any other information the applicant or the town determined is appropriate.
Yes, I don't see as necessary.
Yes, it is. It's halfway down, we're almost two thirds of the way down. I think it's just a second, detailed plans.
Okay, so knock.
Now, I'll, can I interject? I think that keeping the word as necessary gives your zoning board of appeals the power to say, you didn't provide us with enough. Please provide us with more.
So why doesn't it say detailed site plans to illustrate the development, blah, 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 and any other documentation deemed necessary by the board?
I mean, I I think the zoning board has, would do that anyway. With as necessary in there with or without.
Okay, okay.
Like, I think just speaking about applicants from how it works, like if we get an application, and this has happened, if the zoning board gets an application and it's sketchy and it's like missing a site plan or like the person's not showing their project relative to property lines and setbacks, we send it back. Yeah, they have to do it again and we submit.
But that's not the instance I'm interested in. Avoiding interest in, instance, I'm interested in avoiding, avoiding is when there's a consensus within town hall that application makes sense, but there's consensus outside of town hall and maybe it doesn't. And town hall, because of its consensus, deems certain things unnecessary, that the public might deem necessary. That's when you get friction. And I think when you're setting a minimum standard, the minimum standard should be the minimum standard. And then if you want to, as necessary, include things that are additional to that, then that's not the language you're using. The way this reads, it does do what Pam said, which is allow them to ask for more if they want, but it also allows them to ask for less. And I think the minimum standard would be the minimum standard, and then anything additional could be required.
And anything above, everything else above that last line, Jim, is the minimal standard. And I mean, it's pretty specific.
So then, but so then just to be clear then, so then detailed site plans are only required when they're deemed necessary. Because it has the as necessary part attached to it. And I think the detailed site plan should be considered the minimum requirement.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I I.
I I thought it was more like descriptive, like did side plans. I understand what you're saying.
And then if you want to give the the board more latitude to ask for more, then at the end of this, say, and any other drawings the board.
I think, I think I was reading it as detailed site plans that provide the necessary information to illustrate site development. So I think there's just ways of reading it. Okay.
Okay, so we're eliminating.
Fine.
So at the engine, you're suggesting that we change that determines is appropriate to to determine.
As appropriate or necessary. Maybe, yeah, I go with either, that would address Pam's concern.
You know what? I said, what you're saying is true. When you say, and detailed site plans to illustrate site development. The ZBA could always kick it back and say, these aren't detailed enough. So it it's fine, it's fine.
Okay, yeah, and the word appropriate is okay.
Yeah.
It means, okay, yeah.
So you want to delete the phrase as necessary?
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I read it the way Pam did, but Jim, I see your point. I don't have a problem at all with deleting.
Yeah.
So onward from page fifteen.
Actually.
No, no, I have a question.
Go ahead.
The way to ask.
Fifteen.
Eight point eight point eleven. Employment of outside consultant. So I'm very happy to see this here. But I don't claim to understand pursuant to MGL chapter forty four, section fifty three G. What does that mean?
Means they get paid for it by the end.
It it is David, and I'm not a lawyer. You have one on the call. Maybe I should let him talk. Section fifty three G speaks to the fact that It, it is David, um, and I'm not a lawyer. You have one on the call. Maybe I should let him talk. Section fifty three G speaks to the fact that with this language in here, you are entitled to hire that consultant, but, uh, go ahead, Joel.
Well, actually, some pride of authorship here, like more, more than thirty five years ago, so I've been with KP Law, the predecessor Coleman Page for thirty five years. In my previous job, I wrote the first draft of this section. Got tinkered around with a little bit, but the point of it, thank you, Pam.
And Kate, and Kate.
It goes beyond that because any money that comes into the town, as you all know, has to go to the general fund. And then you have to wait for town meeting to appropriate the money out. And this also has language, because in fact, we didn't need this statute to authorize communities to hire consultants. They had that authority already. But what they didn't have the authority to do was to turn around and spend the money immediately to pay the consultant. So if you read fifty three G, it has a clause in it saying without further appropriation. So, um, I will add that it does require, and this was some wrangling back and forth with the Home Builders Association. It requires that each board has a regulation. If you read fifty three G, it says boards by regulation may require the hiring of consultants, you know, that, that the, that at the expense of the applicant. So we'll just double check to make sure that the zoning board has those regulations and for that better, the planning board. But the main, as I said, the main point is that it becomes a quick revolving fund and the money comes in, the applicant pays five or fifty thousand dollars, you can turn around and pay the consultant without having to wait six months for a town meeting.
Okay, but so then I still have just a little further question and really, you know, it's about the word shell, right? Because what I'm hoping here is that we take any doubt about the fact that our planning board or our zoning board are not wireless technology experts out of the equation. And we just acknowledge that they're not. Um, and that therefore, since they are not, and this is a complicated issue for which there is much oh, oh, much and conflicting sentiment about what the right thing to do is. Um, we are going to hire someone to review this that is a professional on it. So I just want to make sure that shall means there's no doubt about the fact that they are hiring someone to do this. Does that what shall mean?
Yeah, so just to make you feel even better, the word may was in there originally and got changed to shall.
Okay, thank you.
Just as an aside, um, I was at a meeting last night with, with Sean Consonine. And I asked her what she thought about the ZBA being this permanent granting authority on this and then the planning board who talked about doing it. And we had an interesting conversation, but, um, they would love to avoid it. So I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they will take advantage of the opportunity to have a consultant. Because, you know, she recognizes that we've gone through the trenches on the information and they haven't. So any way that we can make this even more prominent.
Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we can move on from page fifteen. Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, I know some flipping ahead. So this is a minor point. Making your lawyer happy and keeping the town out of trouble. I think the next comment is on page seventeen. Discontinued use.
Okay, so just hold that for a minute. So before you go on from that, on page sixteen. So eight eighteen thirteen, the post-construction RFR study. Um, and again, we've got that sticky little word in there, may. So um, kind of of the thought that we shall require operators to demonstrate compliance with FCC regulations. Um, and not necessarily by showing calculations either, by doing, going out and doing a test. Does that put us in any kind of, if we replace may with shall? Does that get us into any kind of trouble or is it perceived as onerous or whatever?
Well, I'm gonna ask David to talk about what reporting they're required to do. You can go from there. Required under federal law and regulations.
Okay, um, yeah, first of all, the protocol for evaluating compliance. Um, you get, um, a snapshot of current conditions when you go out and do measurements. Uh, when you do calculations, you do a worst case analysis where you assume everything is turned on. All the radios are transmitting at the same time for a duration of thirty minutes. So you're doing a worst case analysis when you use the protocol to do calculations. So in fact, the calculations are demonstrably more protective than going out and doing field measurements and scratching your head, wondering whether you captured the, uh, you know, the peak activity during the day. Um, so, uh, that's why I recommend having this protocol this way. Now, I deal with situations where there are antennas on apartment building rooftops or a condo rooftop. And there's a sun deck up there. And you might want to take measurements when it's a close call. But in situations where the calculations show you that it is day minimus. Um, there's, there's no value in doing measurements because typically what we find is that the measurements on the ground in the neighborhood around a cell tower are below the sensitivity of a broadband safety survey instrument. Uh, a- and, and so the number that you get is actually the noise for the instrument, not the actual reading of the emissions. Um, so there are some pros and cons to doing both. And, and I think if you have the flexibility to decide for each situation, which, uh, method or both methods you want to apply, uh, you can do that on a case by case basis with the advice of your consultant.
What if we make it a shall rather than a may, David? Any issue with that?
Uh, it, it, it shall being, let's see, where a town may require operators. It, yeah, I mean, you can make that a shall, a- as long as you still have the flexibility to determine what the appropriate protocol for the situation is.
So the second sentence, we're gonna hold the may in place. May require either the field survey or the calculation.
Right.
Yeah, so the first, in the first line, the town shall.
Yes.
And then in following up, they will have the choice.
Yeah, right. The flexibility of calculations or, or by, uh, field survey.
Yeah.
That's fair, I think. Okay.
Should we change the beginning of that paragraph and say immediately after? Or something like that, and anytime after, and anytime after? So imme- immediately af- after the installation and anytime thereafter?
Oh, because anytime is anytime.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, yeah, so that two years from now, something, uh, looks different and, uh, there's a concern, you can simply require it, even though you may already have done it. Uh, the day after the facility was turned on.
Okay. Um, I, I had a question about, um, uh, eight eighteen twelve A two. And in A, we talk about waivers and in F, we talk about waivers. And I wanted to add to the end of the first one, A, the application, we saw the application criteria, eight eighteen ten, or is granted waivers to specific application requirements as noted.
I don't know where you are.
Oh, I'm on page sixteen.
Page sixteen.
So it's eight eighteen twelve A two A?
Yeah.
Okay, so say it again, Kate, sorry.
Well, I just wanted to add, add as noted. Um, and maybe that's not necessary because we're saying specific application requirements, waivers to specific application requirements as noted. Or not.
As Kate has noted in the decision?
Um, no, as noted in the bylaw that we've, we've only, I, I don't, I think we've had a feeling, we don't want the uh, ZBA to be thinking that lots of things could have waivers attached to them. These are specific areas that we've said, yes, there could be a waiver there.
So maybe you mean as authorized in this bylaw?
As noted in the bylaw.
Yeah, as noted in the bylaw or as authorized. You know, if you, if you think that captures kind of what I'm trying to get at here, Joel.
Yeah, as noted is, is to subject to, subject to interpretation, but yeah, I think it is authorized in the, in this bylaw. Gets it.
Or in this section.
Well, there's various.
Well, this bylaw, uh, uh, well, to me.
There's various places throughout that may allow you to have waivers.
Well, keep in mind, again, the application is going to the zoning board, which has variance authority, and if the applicant chooses to simultaneously apply for a variance, it, it goes beyond what this section of the bylaw authorizes. And there's nothing that can be done to, to bypass that or, or to, to limit that. But I, I, I think it's a good point. I mean, if the applicant isn't seeking a variance, then they can only get the waivers that the bylaw specifically calls out.
Uh, I, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're talking about here. A is talking about the things that need to be in an application. And somebody says, I've got a site plan, but it's, uh, uh, you know, one inch twenty feet instead of one inch to forty feet. Can I have a waiver so that you'll accept the site plan as I presented it? And the other item that, uh, was being asked about F has to do with waivers to the requirements of the bylaw to obtain an approval. Which don't include the dimensional requirements that are fixed and require variance. So those are two different kinds of waivers being addressed in two A and two F.
So never mind.
You know, it's somewhat like you all act on subdivisions and your subdivision rules and regulations have all kinds of specific requirements and you're asked to waive if you require sidewalks on two sides of the street, for instance.
Right.
That's what A is getting at. The application.
Okay. And continue on, Joel. You, you're good, Kate?
Yeah, yeah, it just, I, you know, one of the things that I personally am going to do is go in and look for every place that we gave an exception. Or we sort of leaned and see what that group looks like.
Yeah. Page seventeen.
Okay, then abandonment. So this is a bugaboo. Every time we see a bylaw that requires a bond, it inevitably allows the town to go in and trespass on private property and do harm to their land without the benefit of a court order. So it's our job to keep the town out of trouble. So, um, let's see, uh, in paragraph two. The third sentence, starting at the end of the third line. This has to do, of course, with the, the facility having been abandoned or discontinued. So if the tower or antenna is not removed within this time, the town may give notice that it will contract for removal within thirty days following written notice to the owner. And here's what we added, either with the owner's permission or pursuant to a court order. But we want a period there, Glenn, after court order. So in other words, you can't go onto the land unless the owner allows it or you get a court order to go in there and remove the tower or the facility or whatever it might be.
Thank you for protecting us from ourselves.
Exactly.
And we also, we had, we tweaked for two, right? Are you gonna get that? About the amount to be determined by the zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
Instead of flat fifty.
Yeah, so before looking at the, uh, the third line, it, well, second line, the applicant shall furnish a performance bond or evocable letter of credit naming the town of Lenox as beneficiary in an amount to be determined by the zoning board of appeals. Previously, it said fifty thousand dollars, which seemed like a random number. Could be less. So that seemed to make more sense.
So they would have to have some, um, format for, for figuring out what that amount would be, but what would be up to them to determine.
Typically, you ask, and you may have run into this with subdivisions, you know, you ask the applicant. If, you know, when you're asking for a bond to complete the roadways, you know, what's it gonna cost? And then you have some independent entity review that estimate.
And, and also bear in mind that it costs a lot more to remove, uh, a, a tower and its infrastructure than it does to remove some antennas from a building rooftop. This clause covers, uh, any uh, administrative approval or special permit.
So moving right along. The next one, I think, was just a question. You go on page eighteen, paragraph four. Let's go ahead and read it. Then there wa- there was a highlighted question, who would oversee this request? So, um, we didn't put it in the bylaw, you know, it could be. I mean, logically, it could be two people. I, I, I think our consensus was that the building inspector may be the most logical person. I mean, we're talking about a structure that's being built, it will very, very likely have been through the select board for approval, right? So this is, um, so what was the example of the most recent occasion?
About like a truck, a satellite truck that Pleasant Valley for broadcasting BSO musicians to the BBC.
We, we basically came to the conclusion that whoever handles it, it's not part of the zoning bylaw. It's a municipal issue. And we just state the exemption. We don't have to state who's in charge of it.
Okay.
So likely it would go through the select board, not necessarily, but for some kind of approval, maybe some kind of license or whatever. And so they may deal with it. Otherwise, it could default to the building inspector.
Yeah, and it doesn't say, the important thing here is that it doesn't say structure. Because, you know, one of these temporary wireless communications facilities is more often, like you said, it's a, it's a truck with the, you know, like a news truck with the big satellite thing on it.
So we're We're basically making the assumption that that group or organization that wants the special event to be, to have this kind of coverage would be in touch with people on their own or, I mean, I don't think we've talked about temporary.
Well, mind you, this language all comes straight from federal law too. These are just exemptions in the FCC bylaw, so in the FCC, so we just restated them.
I, I also think that somebody who wants to, is gonna set a truck up and do it without getting permission is gonna do it without getting permission. And that's a different challenge than somebody who comes to the selectmen and says, we need to, we have this two week thing and we're just giving the selectmen the ability to do that.
So what you're saying is that there is the possibility of kind of a catch up situation.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, which is what prompted the question really was, do we need a form, do we need to formally say, if you want to do this on a temporary basis, you do need to be in touch with X in town?
You know what? It go, that goes for all five of these things, really. I think the question is, does the municipality want to set up general bylaws to like govern these issues? All we're saying is that, that this bylaw does not regulate these types of installations.
You know, it could be a, a single day event that is a truck that nobody would even notice was happening. You know, it could be a, a single day event that is a truck that nobody would even notice was happening. But it is a temporarily, a temporary wireless communications facility, just to make clear that. They don't need to go through all this approval process.
Why don't we just have a lot of trucks come in and do this for us?
So there's, uh, so are there, um, continue on, Joel, there's a change of definition.
No, I don't think so. I mean, there were red lines and blue lines that you may have seen before, but I didn't know that. That's it for me.
Joel, um, I, I wanted you, if you could, to address, I mean, one of the things. Um, we asked you in just preparing you to review the bylaw was if you felt like we really missed anything. Um, material, whether we had left anything out, because as usual, you don't know what you don't know. So I, I know you also told us about your, you and your firm, your personal experience and your firm's experience. Um, but so can you maybe, um, answer that? Cause, did we miss anything?
Yeah, no, uh, I, I don't think you missed anything. Uh, you know, the, the comment came up maybe towards the beginning. About the other bylaws. See, the other bylaw is old that it predates the whole eligible facilities. Phenomenon that came along, you know, sometime after the telecommunications act of nineteen sixty-six, but I think. This catches up to that. I mean, more than anything, what it, well, it does two things, obviously, as a. A matter of providing coverage for the town, you've changed the, the use schedule part of it. Uh, and the other thing you've done is you brought it up to date to comply with the more recent requirements for the. More rapid approval of eligible, eligible facilities. And I'm sure you all know. You know, if you don't meet the so-called shot clock, it's automatically approved. So no, I think then that the, um, the bylaws got everything it needs to have.
Um, the other question that I think came up in some correspondence was. Does this apply to, um, facilities in the right of way?
Oh yeah, it does not. Simply so, uh, zoning as a general proposition does not regulate activities in a right of way. And actually, after we spoke, I sent Pam a memo. We have, it was written on it some years back, but. Specifically talking about wireless facilities in a right of way. So the, there's a separate state law. That really goes back to, you know, poles and conduit. Actually, it's called the pole and conduit statute, but all of those wires. That, you know, are, are, uh, in the rights of way that are providing street lights and probably at one time maybe gas lights. So these. Uh, we, the smaller facilities that are going into the right of way are governed under that process and they're not covered by zone.
So that will be a separate, Tom, Tom and Gwen, correct? That will be a discovery, setting up rules for small wireless facilities in the right way will be a continuing. Uh, will be an effort to be continued.
Yeah, well, you'd want to check, uh. Possibly, yeah. I mean, see if it isn't already being handled through the select board.
Right. I think we, we had this discussion at one point about that being, you know, a general town by law. Now, because it's not really like as Joel said, that's don't need to relate this.
Select board adopted to review some level of small scale, so. Or wireless, um, they used it for the booster on an existing utility pole in front of Tanglewood. But I think when we were, when we started trying to revamp our wireless bylaw. Um, I think we had, we were going in the direction of having a more flushed out. Process with like more detail about what would be. Like what we want things to look like in the.
And that's the framework for that is pretty well.
Yes, pretty well.
Pretty well completed.
Pretty well developed. And I think our goal would be to take that to the main town meeting.
Right. Okay.
And as a general bylaw.
So I think, so I think what we're gonna do now, because of the difficulties we had earlier with technology and a lot of people can't participate as well. Since we got the feedback now from Joel. Is we, I think, continue the meeting until next Tuesday. Where we can further discuss. Make any more, any further additions or whatever in the intervening time. Should more questions come up and then all for. The public comment after, after that, next, next week.
Question, I, I mean, I have one other thing that I wanted to ask about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's. It's going, it's on page eight and it was under height limitation. The second bullet down under by balancing test, um, and I sort of. You know, it's, at its discretion, you know, my thing with waivers and discretion here. At its discretion, the zoning board may reduce the capacity for multiple facilities typically by a decrease in height or width. If the board finds it is preferable to risk the need for a second tower than a group one, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing, number three. The zoning board may allow height greater than necessary for the allowable height if such. Height does not materially increase the impacts of the proposed facility. And my side question was, do we want to put any cap on that? I mean, this leaves it wide open.
I kind of wondered myself, Kate, like why that this was there. David, do you remember?
Uh, yes, my mic open? Yes, it is. Thanks. Uh, uh, this, this gets into the, what, what I described to you at another meeting is, is the tension between. Demanding that every new tower have as many, uh, wireless facility, uh, spaces on it as possible. And demanding that wireless facility, uh, that towers, new towers be as short as you possibly can have them. To minimize their visual impact and, and it's a trade off. Uh, so there may be a situation way back in the woods somewhere where you want them to put up a tower. The applicant is a wireless company and only wants to be at ninety feet. But that's right above the tree line and you know that if it's a hundred twenty foot tall tower. That it, uh, is still going to be essentially invisible to the rest of the community or, you know, or, or something like that, just as an illustration. So you would, um, look to say, well, here's a case where we want to lean in favor of. Granting a higher tower height than, uh, the applicant is asking for. If it's a tower company, they're gonna ask for the hundred twenty feet anyway, but if it's a wireless company, they're going to only ask for what they need. And at the same time, you don't want to be in a situation where the, the, the bylaw says. Like I said, that it, it, it must always have enough space to co-locate all four carriers. Because there may be another situation where a ninety foot tower that's only suitable for one, maybe two carriers. Is all that you can stand at that location and you'd rather have a second. Uh, ninety foot tower in the woods, a quarter mile up the road than to have a single one hundred twenty foot tower at, at this particular location. So this gives you the ability to, to make that decision based on the context of the site and the proposal.
I still, I hear you, David, but this number three. Is this part of the balancing test or is it something different? I don't even understand what it says anymore.
Okay, may allow height greater than necessary for the allowable height. If such height does not materially increase impacts. Okay, so the allowable height is. Not exceeding the minimum height necessary to provide adequate coverage. So, number one, that's, that's the allowable height.
Okay.
So what we're saying is you can exceed, and maybe there's another way to say this, so it's not as opaque. But that you can exceed, uh, number one, what page is this? Eight? I'm gonna go to my copy because this one's jumping around.
Wouldn't the allowable height under number one be as high as it needs to be to accommodate? You know, it'll be a hundred and twenty if they want to put three carriers on it.
Yeah, yes, but if there's, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. If there's only one carrier proposed, um.
So you might actually say, you, you've only asked for ninety feet, but we want you to have one twenty because we want you to put more carriers on.
May I, may I just, is it, is it a wording issue? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking it would, makes more sense to me. The zoning board may allow height greater than the allowable height if such additional height. Does not blah, blah, blah.
Well, I mean, given that the zoning board is the one who determines what's allowable, how would they allow something more that's what's allowable?
Let's, let's, okay, let's game that for a second here. First of all, what's allowable is it shall not exceed the minimum height necessary to provide adequate coverage.
Okay.
Okay, now you have a company that comes in that is a tower company. And it's proposing a one hundred twenty foot tower and Verizon is proposing to be at the top of it. When you go through the review procedure, it turns out the Verizon only needs ninety feet. So the minimum height necessary for the tower is ninety feet.
Okay.
But the applicant is proposing a hundred twenty foot tower because they are pretty sure that they can get additional collocators on it.
I see, okay.
And then you evaluate the visual impact difference between the ninety foot and the one hundred twenty foot. And you decide doing that balancing test, whether. The additional height for some future occupant, it's not guaranteed there will be one. Uh, but that risk is a reasonable risk because you determine that the difference in visual impact between ninety feet and a hundred twenty feet at that particular location. Is, is not material.
Sue, Sue, do you think that can be worded better?
I, yeah, I think.
I mean, I don't even, uh, may, I, I think if you, it's, it's in there, even if you remove the necessary, because may allow height greater. Than the allowable height.
Yeah, I think that works.
It's, it's in there without saying that. I think it's confusing because. Uh, you know, then necessary, I totally understand what you're saying, like, it, it, you know, Verizon only needs ninety feet, so we can. But, you know, and they're only gonna ask for ninety feet, but we may. We may encourage them to, to ask for more if they can get more on there, but I just. I, I, I don't see how adding then necessary in there clarifies it. It seems to me more difficult to understand.
I agree.
Is that part of the balance? Is, does three become part of the balancing test or not? Is it a separate thing? I'm just trying to like help the.
I think, I think it's a separate thing because I think it goes to what, what David's saying about the, you know, the, the tower. Company desires versus the carrier desires. So that's when these two come flocking together and the board said, sort of sits back and says, hmm. What can we do with this?
Um, Gwen, that's not the necessary one to take out. We wanna, is that correct? We want to leave the necessary in number one. We want to take it out in number three.
Number three.
Yeah, we're talking about number.
Than necessary, strike that, please.
Well, no, height greater than the allowable height.
Oh, yeah, 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 right.
Oh, yeah.
You need that then.
Yeah, sorry, missed it.
Right, so necessary for, yeah. And, and if you want, you could put in parentheses or a comma. After the allowable height, a reference to, uh, subclause one in this clause.
Yes, I agree, because it's not really defined. The term allowable height's not used in clause one, so yeah.
So Gwen, you're gonna leave the word four in there. Wait, where, do we leave it in there or not?
So after you put that comma after height, what is it you want us to put in?
Back up to number one.
Yeah.
Eight point, eight point.
Well, a, as described in clause one above.
Yeah. Eighteen, six, A, one.
So after the second height, yeah.
Eight, eighteen, six.
Well, it would be after allowable height because that's.
So we want that to go number one, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, what am I inserting?
It's after allowable height, not after such height.
Right, yeah, so. It's, so it will read, the zoning board may allow height greater than the allowable height. Parentheses, eight, eighteen point six.
A one.
That work for everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's better.
But the question on cap is still sort of hanging out there. So what you're saying is, we don't really want to play with the cap. We've, we've. Made it pretty clear that we want people to do the minimum height that works. But then.
Right, we could still.
Situation like this, we're allowing.
Minimum height necessary to provide adequate coverage, but shall not exceed X number of feet.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got enough caps on height.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We could add that in there and we're not saying that you have to make it two hundred feet. You know, we still want you to do the minimum height necessary to provide adequate coverage that shall not be any higher than. X number of feet.
I think. David, is there some kind of number that like, could you ever end up with a really tall tower out in the yonder that would cover the whole town? But you couldn't see it? Is that possible?
It, it wouldn't cover the whole town, no. Uh, so, uh, as a practical matter, they, they don't want to put these towers up any greater than two hundred feet, so. I mean, worst case would be one ninety probably, uh, because two hundred feet is the FAA threshold if you're. Appropriate distance from an airport. Uh, a, and I just saw, uh, a one hundred seventy foot tower proposed in, uh. Uh, Grafton, Massachusetts, which I thought they were, they would have been done with tall towers, but it's on a large wooded property. It's, it's set back pretty well. Um, and because of that, they need the extra height to get, get it out. Um, so i- if we picked a height, it would be. Arbitrary unless, you know, we're concerned about the, uh, the two hundred foot height, uh, limit for FAA.
This was taken from other bylaws that I saw, or at least one other bylaw, so it's sort of language. So, some other towns do have height, you know, heightened ceilings.
I mean, I, I think that we probably have this covered well enough. And we're unlikely to have a company want to come in and just, you know, build some enormous tower here.
Well, the fact of the matter is, a tower, a tower costs money to build.
Yeah.
And they're not gonna build a tower any taller than they need to.
In excess of what the.
But like, I just feel like in the past, it's been one hundred feet somewhere, it's like that. But I don't remember if that's a current bylaw or if that was like a previous draft.
It might have been a preview, but then it's more discussed to keep being flexible, so.
The idea of being flexible and it will. It would be like, it could be very site specific to. Like how it, whatever it's like and how it fits into the.
Yeah, I, we're fine. I did notice.
So Gwen, what happens to this draft now relative to the one that's sitting on? In town hall, in town clerk's office.
Updated first day in the morning and asked Kerry Sullivan, our town clerk, to have it available for anyone who wants to copy. And it will also be posted on our website. This was posted on the website yesterday or on Monday.
Jim has a question. So this, this goes to the. Congress of nature, mass of the meeting law meetings and what we can talk about in email or what we can't talk about in the nation. So I'm seeing a recurring theme in the emails that we get from the public, which are sort of difficult to talk about when they come in because of the emails we can't. Um, and then by the time we have a meeting, they maybe don't get discussed, but. Somebody or more than one person keeps offering, um. The free thirty minute lethal consultation from an attorney who's versed in this. Appears to have a different opinion.
Excellent choice, try that.
Wait.
You cannot comment.
Come on, man, you made it almost through the whole meeting, you well behaved.
Okay, so just, I thought these folks have been muted.
Anyway, so.
Not really a joke.
Since I'm interested in process as much as product, right, because, I mean, you know, we have to be able to defend our process. Is there some way we accommodate this request? That this, determine and decide if we want to include them in the meeting in two weeks. I'm, I'm just, I'm interested in a group discussion about it, because it keeps coming in via email and it never gets discussed.
Well, I, I think you know, we're on our second consultant. We could be on our fifteen, and I think that some of the same folks could still find something problematic about that person. So we have hired to help us, um, people who are extremely well versed in understanding how this whole process is done and has assisted, I don't know, some very large number of towns in um, and cities in Massachusetts with that, and it's also consulted in other ways. And I feel comfortable that we're getting the best bylaw information that we can get from that person. Um, in looking at some of the things that have been sent, we've been pretty much flooded, I mean, it's sometimes called flooding zone, with a lot of information of varying kinds, and I you know, have spent some time reading a fair amount of this stuff, and I know other people on the board have as well, and listen to presentations by this attorney that are on YouTube, et cetera, et cetera. And what strikes me is that, um, in the flurry of concern, we're getting all these articles that say health effects of X, so we got one of those the other day. And when I read health effects of X, of radio frequency electromagnetic fields from industrial health, which is a grateful organization and an editorial. I wondered if the person who sent it had actually read it. Because if you go to the conclusion and the comments at the end, the health effect that show up as a scary term in the headline, um, really don't seem to be there at the end. What is asked for at the end is very different. Um. I'll read the conclusion, it's just one long sentence. Um, the problem with health effects of RFE M F has not been definitively resolved, but due to the results of previous research on poss- possible health effect of RFE M F, it seems necessary to use precautionary principles and Alara as low as reasonably achievable principles when the new sources of electromagnetic emissions will be planned and installed. And the paragraph prior to this went into a lot of the studies that had been looked at. There are, I think, twenty, twenty citations and references. Uh, I took a look at some of those, and what struck me was that it, I think eighteen of the twenty were basically about people's cell phone, cell phones studies. So they had nothing really to do with towers and electro and base stations. Two of them did reference base stations, and I took a quick look at one of those. Um, so I think that, I think that we have in our effort here, we have tried to do alarm as low as reasonably achievable principles. Um, and I think that's all that we can be asked to do as members of the planning board. Um, we can't fight the FCC, um, we can't, um, not do something because of the need in town for coverage for people whose health also feels compromised by not having coverage. Um, and we can't do the epidemiological studies that are referenced as would be legal. Um, so we've done the best that we can do. And as far as introducing someone who might bring in, you know, a whole new bylaw concept and whatever, I think we're pretty much close to the end of our process. We've been at this for two years, and I for one feel like we need to move on to other things, and, um, and if at the public hearing, people have specific bylaw information that would help us, um, you know, again, I looked at something that's been submitted by Courtney Delardi, I think at the last meeting, and what struck me was that we had done probably half the things that he had suggested in that list. So we're getting pounded and hammered by things that we've already actually done in this bylaw. So I feel like I'm not particularly interested in inviting another attorney in. If that attorney happens to have a background and, um, is I triple E certified, I would certainly be interested, but I'm doubtful that he has been I triple E certified.
What is that, the International Electrical and Electronics Engineers Association or something like that?
And.
It's similar to, it's a, it's a trade organization for electrical engineer. Like the ASME is for mechanical engineer.
Yeah, basically, that's a pretty high level of, um, expertise.
Yeah.
And I think that that's the information that we needed as part of this. We've had a lot of public information. Right now, let's just move ahead. That is mine.
I would, um, I agree with Kate. I also, um, wanna say that with KP Law and Joel Bard, we have an impartial attorney. We have one who's not you know, impart, they're impartial, you know, they're independent and impartial, they're not litigators, they're not whatever. Um, who has reviewed and signed off on our law and told it, told us it's not missing anything material. Um, like Kate, I have read all the correspondence that's come in, and I've said this before, so it's already known. I've read many of the bylaws that have been put in front of us via correspondence. I've watched several videos from, from the start. I think I've watched some of them two or three times. Um, so I, I think our bylaw is very, is, is, is very solid. Um, it accomplishes what it needs to accomplish to both, you know, protect the interests of Lennox citizens, and at the same time, uh, facilitate, uh, getting some more infrastructure into our town so that we have improved cell service. And I, I personally, be- because I've myself have done tons of research and reading, including, again, things sent to us from people in correspondence, I think we're in a really good place.
So I guess I just, I look at it sort of what are the risks benefit? So I hear quite clearly from Kate that the risk including that person is um, clouding, um, a thorough process at the last minute with just that, and I guess the benefit or said oppositely, the, the risk I see of not including, this thing's gotta go to town um, meeting and get passed by two thirds of the people. So if for no other reason, we wanna make sure people felt heard uh, in the interest of, you know, uh, getting their vote, right? Um, I guess that's the balancing act that I see, um, and I don't really go, and, and there's one thing that, you know, just sort of sticks, rubs me the wrong way, but I, I mean, it just may be the way it is, but anytime somebody says, no, no, you know, you don't have, you can't think about that. Don't worry about it, somebody smarter than you has thought about that. Which to bitch, I mean, the FCC says these are the rules by which you and, I mean, in some ways it makes sense to me, like, because I, I don't know, I think about electromagnetic waves and cancer and that, that's not what I do. But in another way, it just sort of feels like, well, you know, don't look at the man behind the screen. There's no wizard behind the screen, it just feels a little, that's, I, I don't know what the right answer is.
Well, I think for all of us, I mean, you know, uh, I sat a neighbor down, you know, just walking by my house. And last year I sat him down, he's an electrical engineer, and I said, okay, you know, tell me about these things, and he said, we're surrounded by it. I mean, you know, you hear a lot of different types of things. Uh, recently I saw, uh, a friend who's a professor of nursing, pediatric nursing, and we talked about some of this because she's also a former chair of the sandwich select board. Um, so whatever they've done in sandwich in terms of their bylaw and towers and all of that, um, had to go through their committee as well. And I just feel like there's a certain point at which, um, we have to make, you know, we have to make some assessment of whether we go ahead or whether we introduce, um, more confusion. And my fear is that we will introduce more confusion because the sources may not be as good as, as what's out there. I mean, there are a lot of great studies out. We've all looked at a lot of these things, but.
So I mean, to that end up a little bit, you know, you mentioned the certification. And, um, you know, it's almost like because the person's certified, they're like a part of the problem, like, because, well, they're, they're an electrical engineer, of course they think that.
Well, but, but do we do that about every expert that's out there at some point?
Man, I think the problem is, is we're being asked to essentially push back on FCC rights. I mean, we're, which is not within our purview and, uh, uh, and, you know, i- if, if people have issues with what is allowed under the FCC.
This isn't the place to talk. No, I, I guess I'm not talking about that, so, um, I did mention that that is something that bothers me, but what I'm saying is, I'm just trying to tend to the process. That's all, that's all I'm trying.
But, but I, I have to, I have to, you know, first of all, there aren't any lawyers that do anything for free. So, there's all, you know, speaking as a, speaking as a member of the bar, there's always something in it for the attorney, okay, always. And, um, so I'm sorry, but if someone willing to come in here and talk to us free, um, and give opinion, doesn't mean that they're, they're not somehow, yeah. And I, I'm inclined to agree with Kate. I think, I think, actually, I'm the newbie on the board. So you guys have been slugging this out for two years, right? And, um, and it's must be like dog years because really it's, 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 it's a lot. And, um, I am very impressed with the quality of the experts that, that, that you have retained with Mr. Maxson, Gwen, Pam, who's done a lot of ex- extra work on this, everybody on this board, and, 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 and attorney bar. Um, I, I, I am, I think, everybody, I think we have done the, as you said, the best that we can do, stay within the parameters of what the FCC requires. Consider the fact that the majority of people want to have coverage. Um, you know, Brandy Sorrentino spoke at, at one of our meetings saying, you know, she had, is without cell service at a time when she needed, she had a relative who had fallen. So I, 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 I think that we have come up with a, a plan, so to speak, or bylaws that will enable car- for us to have coverage everywhere in the town and, 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 you know, which of course includes Lenox Dale. And, um, in, in a way that, that is somewhat flexible so that we can consider and get into that balancing, and the zoning board can get into that balancing about minimal intrusion with maximum coverage. So I, I am, uh, of the opinion that any further input is from the public at large, but I'm not, you know, in favor of. Of what?
Not in favor of seeing you as a board.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, one, one of the things that caught my attention, um, and looking at Mr. Maxim's, um, CV when he gave it to us, is, you know, lots of experience in electrical engineering stuff and radio stuff and all of that, but member of International Committee on Electromagnetic Safety, parentheses, ISIS, twenty sixteen to the present. That says to me that when, you know, we ask him questions related to safety, we're getting somebody who's pretty up to date on those issues in the industry, and that might not be satisfactory to other people, but it, it met a certain standard for me.
Oh, I agree, and I, I'm, I, if I were to continue and expand, try to expand on it, I think that'd be repeating what, what everybody has, has said here, so yeah, I'm pretty much to that conclusion as well, but I don't think we need any more. It's, you know, like Jim said, it's gonna cloud the, cloud the issue with the, at the, at the end of the whole, at the end of the whole thing, introduce, you know, more confusion, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm not inclined to, to entertain it either. And we're, as, as a board.
Yeah, 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 right, we're not, you know, it's a good, that would come to the meeting. And we are cognizant of and accept of the argument that we didn't hear that side, uh, uh, you know, like that sort of backlash at town meeting. We accept that risk, right, because that, that is the risk of the other side of the, right, we just accept that.
They're also hosting their own forum on Thursday.
No, well, um, but we, I'm sure.
Oh, okay, but how, how do people know? The, the letter was sent to Gwen.
A lot of stuff.
I'm sorry, yeah. Two weeks of no, I was off the bridge.
But I'm just, you know, uh, we I wasn't on board at the time, it's short term rental, but I mean, you know, people can get organized around an idea and, and so I'm just, okay, that's fine, I'm glad we had the conversation, thank you.
Yeah, but I think, you know, Jim, I, I totally understand why you're bringing that up, and I, and I do agree that it's totally a risk benefit situation. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we will know, um, to some extent what the public wants us to do by whatever vote is taken and by whoever shows up to vote in town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with a, a, a bylaw that before it's been getting voted down, uh, if that's what people wanna do. Um, I just wanna, what I'm more concerned about is being okay with the bylaw that I brought to the meeting, right, it's like, it doesn't have to pass, but I just wanna be, um, comfortable with what I presented, that's all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more comfortable with it now, you know, based on reading what, you know, like you, what you mentioned about the, the email that Ms. Jelardi sent to us about all that, and as I went, went through each one of those items, I'm saying, yeah, that's in the bylaw, we've addressed that, and that's in it, that's in it, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we've addressed most, if not all of those issues already. So, yeah, it's my comfort level with it is, you know, much better than it was earlier, so. And, and as well watching some of their videos and reading some of these other studies and all of that, so. Go ahead, Pam.
No, it's okay.
Okay, all right, there were those, so, there, well, there's, well, there's, well.
Hands are up, we've invested two and a half hours, can we talk?
Wait.
Just hold on a second, so we.
Hold on a second, we're trying to work this out, and if you continue this stuff, I'm starting to get fed up with this. All right, and I'm, I'm gonna lose my cool here. I was gonna make a statement tonight to get some stuff off my chest. I'm gonna wait until either next week or, or perhaps a public hearing. But if you continue to do that, sir, interject in, you won't be allowed to speak any further, period.
So we, we needed to make a motion to continue, right, so we proposed that, I don't think we made the motion or voted on it.
No, so if we were gonna, if we're gonna continue the meeting until next Tuesday, we should probably vote on that, and then that's, to continue it, we won't, we wouldn't allow any other, we're gonna not end the meeting, but continue it until next week, next Tuesday.
Yes.
And then go over anything else and then take public comment.
Okay.
Before the public hearing.
Correct.
We would be adding in that meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Would be an added meeting.
So do we wanna have another meeting next Tuesday or you?
I, I love you, I love you guys, but next Tuesday, I'm, I'm getting like, I'm at Thanksgiving, one of them might come to you.
Oh, that's right, it's Thanksgiving week.
Actually, I'm not gonna be there either.
Okay.
I'm sorry, well, I have an email from Courtney Jelardi saying it's okay to keep having tonight's meeting we talk about her questions that had come in.
But what about, but yeah, but what about the other people that tried to get in?
Still trying to get in.
Right.
Yes.
So, the, are, are we, I mean, I'm a I'm in favor of continuing this to next Tuesday. I'm, I mean. Are you gonna be away?
Yeah, likely gonna be on time.
Yeah, I'm I'm totally gonna be.
Hey, can either of you dial in if it's uh, if we do it with a hybrid situation?
Uh, I could try, yeah.
And we can record it. I mean, we can, I I would say let's have it anyway, as long as we've got three of us, we can record it and we'll be able to give ample time to comment. And go through things like Ms. Jelardi's uh uh shot punch list. Um, which we had talked about. Um, doing tonight anyway. When I say we, I mentioned to Tom that I thought that was a good idea. Um, and we, you know, i- it'll be on tape. For you guys to watch if you can't make it.
I mean, I think I'm gonna be in transit. I think that's.
But what they're saying, they don't need us.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And it's not gonna be, in terms of our work, it's not gonna be substantive as much as it is. Getting a public comment, which will be recorded and 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 the board will take that right in our absence.
Right.
Yeah. So I made that motion.
Okay.
Continue the meeting.
So so to continue the meeting with no further, no further comment from the.
Could we continue the meeting? I'd like these people to talk.
Well. Well, no, because I think if we, when we vote to continue the meeting, we're done, and and that's it until. Right, okay. So I think so, we've got some people here in the crowd that are present. That wanna make a couple of comments, so, you know, Susan, go ahead. So now, keep your, so I'm gonna ask at this point, is anybody that's gonna make a comment. It needs to be, I don't want these long drawn out statements. They need to be specific to issues in the bylaw. Please.
And and start with and.
Right, name and address and that kind of thing.
Susan A. Forty Old Star Bridge Road. I I've, I I I don't even know where to start, even though I wrote something out, um. Uh, just within the last hour, I heard somebody say these bylaws will protect the interest of Lennox citizens. Um, and someone else said people have felt heard, or you want people to feel feel heard. Um, I want you all to be aware of the unintended, I'm assuming unintended consequences. Of these bylaws. By that, I mean. That. There is still the issue of cell antennas on the Curtis building. This was initiated prior, I think, to your even beginning these bylaws. There was a contract with Anthony Lepore a couple of years ago to facilitate. Cell antennas on the roof of the Curtis, Mr. Chidolfi, whom you've probably already met. Has already been up there measuring the roof. This is something that the town intends to do, and I know that's. Um, you folks aren't involved in. Doing it, but you're allowing it, um. Uh, so this is not a hypothetical issue. There was a contract signed between the contract, between Lenox Housing Authority and Anthony. Lepore for him to negotiate installation of cell antennas on the roof of the Curtis building. He was not able to do so because the current zoning bylaws prohibit it, as you know. The new by- bylaws written by the planning board would not only allow them to be built. It prioritizes them. Um, so what I am requesting. Um. Is that in looking at the new bylaws. It says that co-location is given first preference. Um, and I ask the planning board to prevent this. Um. Uh, let's see, if by putting in, by putting in words. To to prohibit cell antennas or towers on residential buildings. That's what I am asking. Just a few words added to your bylaws. Prevent. Prohibit cell antennas or towers on residential buildings. I can't ask the planning board to prevent this on the basis of health reasons. Because quote, our hands are tied, health is not allowed to be discussed. I have other reasons. Number one, noise and disruption. Installing cell antennas on the roof of a residential building like the Curtis means that workmen are going to be walking on that roof. And turning it into a construction site. With all the associated noise and disruption. The Curtis is designated housing for the elderly and disabled. That includes people who are sick, who have poor mobility. And who will be living under all that construction. These are mainly retired building, retired people, some who rarely leave their apartments. Because of health and mobility issues. Would you want to have construction crews working on your roof? While you're there, while you're home. Number two is roof safety. The Curtis was built in eighteen twenty-nine, which makes it a hundred ninety-three years old. It is a flat roof that has to hold whatever amount of snow, winter weather piles on it. How much weight can that roof hold? I don't know. How much weight will workmen, their construction equipment and multiple antennas add up to? Damage to the roof could cause leaks and flooding to apartments below. There is protection in the new bylaws, um. Uh, new towers must be set back from a residential building, uh, from a residential property line. At least one and a half times the height of the tower. There is no setback for antennas or towers co-located on a residential building. And you've made co-location a number one priority. With no setbacks. There is no protection. For an for an existing residential structure. Putting a hole in the roof of the Curtis. Uh, inconvenienced. There is only one elevator in the Curtis to service about sixty residents living on the top three floors. The elevator is necessary for many people to access. Uh, uh, to leave and return from their apartments. Is the availability of this elevator going to be impacted by workmen and equipment going up and down to the roof? I think so. Um, we were told that a special backup generator. For the cell antennas would be necessary. These backup generators make a lot of noise. Either of these, uh, any of these above scenarios could mean elderly, sick and disabled residents. Having to relocate for repairs. These residents also have low incomes. Where do they go? To prevent the above scenario, the wireless bylaw should state. Quote, co-location on a residential building is prohibited. Um, the question is, why is the town discriminating against its seniors and disabled people? Why isn't it protecting them?
Thank you, um, just a couple of clarifications, and I don't wanna get into this in any great detail, but. A suggestion would be that the residents of. The housing, the housing authority has, first of all, it's not the town, it's the housing authority. And this board doesn't have purview over any of that stuff. Generators, structural integrity of buildings, any of that, and first of all. If any kind of, if any kind of structure like that were to be put on any building, doesn't matter where it is or the age of it. The structure has to be evaluated, so that anything that's put on a roof is safe. So engineers have to be involved, i- i- they have to meet codes and standards and all that kind of stuff, so regardless of an age of a building. Um, you know, all that has to be looked into, but these things aren't, these things not just cell antenna, anything's put on a roof. It all has to be evaluated.
Right, right, so the building in Florida that collapsed. Yeah, eh.
So I I suggest, if there is. Two salient points raised. You may or may not agree with that, but. Considering them are in our purview, right? Considering not allowing co-location in some subset of residential, or maybe all, or some subset of the residential and. Uh, the language about preference for co-location, which I think is intended to. Minimize visual disturbance and whether that should not be allowed on residential buildings, and I don't. Wanna get into a long conversation about that now, but I just would just still that out of that conversation. Okay. You have something?
And do, this is short, um.
Just naming. I I know, we should be on a first name basis by now, like.
Yeah, um, right, so I live in, I live at the Curtis, uh, St. Winfrey. And there were just, I mean, there are a couple of things that have been bothering me for weeks now. And one was, and I'm sorry, that is you, Kate, that. You said, you said these particular things, so I wanted to bring them up. The first one was uh, just a real quickie thing that, I mean, you were, it's like you were. Picking up your parcels and and sort of fucking at the same time, and just, well, so collision, co- co- locations are ideal. I thought, well, that sounds like everybody's, I mean, you've made it right. That that's what you wanna do is have co-locations, because. It seems like what you wanna do, in addition to protecting, is to make it easy for Verizon and T-Mobile. And AT&T and.
Let me just interject. If we wanted to make it easy for the cell phone companies to come in here and put towers up anywhere in town. This bylaw would, this bylaw, this, no, this bylaw would be very easy. That used table would be allowed by right, all through residential, commercial, industrial, period, by right. That's a Y in all those zones with no special permits, no public input, no nothing.
Okay.
We could still do performance standards and have setbacks and all that kind of stuff, but there would be no public review at all. Other than maybe a site planner. But doing it this way, the public has more input than what they would have had before, and you could also.
Input, but we we aren't feeling like it's been used, yeah.
Well, you may not be getting your way, and that may be true, but but, but so one of the other things we could do.
The same you finished, actually. You often have very good reasons for what you are saying. So, uh, meeting a couple of meetings later, you said, there's no perfect bylaw. We're doing the best we can with the information we have. Now, we're feeling like the our side of the story is not what you're considering. You hired David, very, very pro-industry guy. Uh, he may, you know, he he may be giving you all kinds of information, but periodically he says, well, I'm not a lawyer. But he's giving you legal advice. He's telling you what part of the FCC you could really look at, the other part you could kind of let go. And he was also not a doctor, and he and he's, you know, he's been, I mean, I I don't know when, you know, Pam, when you spent. Six hours with him that one day, you know, trying to write bylaw stuff. We, the the thing that Courtney is upset about is that you haven't worked on it for two years. Well, for eighteen months of that. She's been giving you names of lawyers who are experts in the field. I don't know that they're I E E E I E, what whatever. But they are experts in the field. They've written the bylaws with other towns. Other towns have very protected bylaws and they still have cells. We don't want no cells either. Personally, I would go back to landlines like that, cancel cell phones. Because I think they're probably gonna kill us in the, in the end, but. Only if somebody throws one at you. But if we're giving you names of lawyers, which we've been giving you for months and months and months, that looks like you're not doing due diligence. So. And I and I understand how that looks. I I do understand that, and I think that's part of why people on the board have. Have dug deep into the things that you've been sending us, you know, I mean, I sat in um. To something that Pittsfield did, you know, with uh Chamberlain and and I can't remember the other people. I had already taken a look at the New Hampshire report that had come out, so we're not, you know. Agnostic of this stuff by any means, but again, it comes down to what we're required to do. And the constraints that exist. And I mean, no matter what issue we're on, there are always constraints, and there are always on, always people on all sides of it. This is particularly tricky because. You know, we understand that there's um, there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of fear around it, all of those things. And I think that we've tried to do within our purview what we can do. And. You know, knowing that our current bylaw. Isn't gonna stand up. It's just gonna fall over.
One thing we could do to make it easy to put it anywhere you want is to do nothing. And they'll just go to court and get this knocked down.
Yeah, once they, once they legally knock this up, the existing bylaw out, and you know, as I've said, there are only five. Properties in town. I looked up where they were, and they're all residential, which is really kind of interesting in its own. Um, thing, but it can just be knocked knocked away, because it doesn't, it doesn't protect us from anything. So to hang on to that like, oh, boy, this is gonna save us, is real falling. Uh, but the SEC is hanging on to that nineteen ninety-six law, oh, which is hopelessly outdated. They, you know, yes, and for some of us, we've looked very hard at the rulemaking that went on from twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen. And the ten thousand five hundred pages of documents that the SEC received and then locked. And the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, you know, case, D C case. But they didn't use it, that's the point, just, you know, some of the headlines make things sound a lot better than they are. So, you know, that was just one little cracking open of the door.
I would also. You know, in response to Amy, um, I would also like if Joel could unmute himself. Joel has specifically been called in to review the bylaw to make sure it holds legal muss. There's nothing that there's, can I fin- can I finish? That there's nothing in it. That that we've left out, that would get us in trouble with the FCC, et cetera, and Joel's firm, Joel himself has. Lots of experience in this, so we have an impartial, independent attorney who has looked at our bylaws. So Joel, I mean, are we good? Is it legal? Is it? Leaving us open to, you know. Something horrible?
But he he answered that question.
Pam, thanks for giving me a chance to speak, cuz um. Jimmy, right, I did answer it, but it gives me a chance to make a couple of points. One is Pam, I think at one point you may have mentioned. Said maybe, I didn't mean to phrase it this way, that we don't litigate. Actually, we do litigate. And the previous speaker might be interested to know that I, in nineteen ninety-six or ninety-seven, sat with a. Committee of a town, not the planning board, they formed a committee with planning board members. To draft a bylaws, one of the early bylaws, and I kept telling them their bylaw was overly restrictive. They passed it anyway, had to defend the town. In federal district court, I was probably one of the first cases defending a bylaw in federal district court, nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight. And we lost, as I said we would, and the tower got built. And I get reminded of it all the time by the residents of the town, and I have to drive by it regularly. And but they all knew that they had passed a bylaw that was overly restrictive. Our firm, and I'd say over the years, at least a half dozen of us. And now over the years, we're talking right about nearly three decades, if my math is right. Um, of studying, litigating, not only the act, which was fairly brief. But all of the FCC circuitous regulations, decisions and so forth that have. Come along since then, so our. Uh, and and you may not be aware of it, but we. I I can't say we only represent municipalities. I I can't say we only represent municipalities. I would say ninety-five percent of the work that my firm does is representing municipalities. We've never represented any telecom interests ever. And so we've been deep in this stuff from day one. And, uh, some of the issues that are being raised obviously are policy decisions. Do you allow? Towers here or there, and I'm I'm. Very, I mean, not only do I think the bylaws sound, but I'm impressed by. The thought that's gone into it and I've been made aware of the commentary and the push and pull from different sides. You know, back in nineteen ninety-seven, not too many people had cell phones, so there wasn't a big. Turnout from people saying, hey, I can't use my cellphone, not only in my house, but in three quarters of the town. Now that's not true in many towns, but I know it's true in some parts of Lenox. So the board has to balance all of those issues and I'm mindful of that. And I think this is a very sound bylaw and. Uh, clearly, people, I I mean, folks who live in the Curtis have their own interests and. You're absolutely within your rights to advocate for. But I think the board's done an excellent job of. Balancing all of the interests of all of the residents of the town. And I'm quite certain that this bylaw of challenge. Uh, will certainly stand up. Thank you.
I would just, it brings me back to the same point that was raised earlier, which is. You know. Residential and co-location, right, because that's, that. That's the fact this conversation is really circulating. So since the goal of the. Bylaw. Is to. As we've discussed it, is to in a safe way, um. Accommodate the maximum. Functionality with a minimum detriment. The yardstick for measuring. That to me would be not unlike the. Diagram that we used, uh, one hundred fifty feet, two hundred fifty feet, you know, if we exclude. R fifteen is the smallest, the only thing. We exclude that, what does that do to our picture? We exclude our thirty, what does that do to our coverage picture? If we exclude. Uh, R one A, what does that do? We exclude R three A, that might be a helpful set of diagrams to get to inform that. Conversation that we know is going to come up two weeks from now. So, well, that's kind of, that's how we arrived at the two hundred and fifty foot. No, I know we did that with the two fifty foot setbacks, but I don't recall doing it with the zones. No, but it was done for the whole town based on a.
Look at the zoning map, look at the zoning.
Right, right, but the zoning map wasn't cross correlated with the coverage map. We did this. We said, we modeled, if you use a hundred fifty foot setback, it allows antennas here and that will do this to the coverage now. And if we do two hundred fifty foot setback, it allows fewer antennas and we'll do this to the coverage map. Well, I don't believe we modeled unless we did, and then my memory just needs to be refreshed. Um, is if we only allow it in C, this is what it does to the coverage map. If we allow it, you know. Uh, not in R fifteen, this is the holes it punches in the coverage map. I think that might be something helpful to bring to the meeting two weeks from now because it's clearly. I mean, look, if we could, I'll be the first, you guys don't have to agree with me, if we could meet our goals of, uh. Uh, effective cellphone coverage, uh, in a defensible way, um. That excluded it from R fifteen. I'd be happy to approve that. And that would answer the, you know, that would address questions like the Curtis.
Well, Curtis is in the C zone. Curtis is in C.
Okay, so maybe it wouldn't, so then, but the the doing that with the C zone would address that.
But, but we could possibly.
I'm not sure you'll be able to extrapolate.
Alright.
From the, from the boundaries, and I don't know if it's too much to ask, try and get that for two weeks from now, but maybe that would be a good thing. Since I don't know how we got the other ones, I'm not the guy to get it done, but. Somebody on this board knew how to do it.
Yeah, Glenn, Glenn took care of it.
Okay, you did, well, Dave.
Provided, like, based on hypothetical. Power location. He has a modeling program that models. The.
The coverage.
The coverage. Yeah, and then I prepared like a setback now.
Right.
So I don't know, it would be something, I guess, David's on the phone, maybe.
What you're talking about is. Taking all the residential zones out.
I'm not talking about taking any zone, I'm talking about looking at how it would affect the coverage. To eliminate it, you know, so we have it by appeal in. R thirty, yeah, we can make it not allowed in R thirty, what does that do to the coverage?
Well, you could also just see that now basically from the drive test results. Just, you know, basically. Draw the zones over the drive test results and you can see where we have a problem and if you don't have the infrastructure, the problem will persist.
That that's exactly what he's talking about. The, 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 the drive test maps don't delineate the zones.
Okay, so delineate the zones.
And the buffer maps, right.
So is there? A way.
And the coverage.
It just seems like a piece of, an additional piece of information.
I mean, my question is, is, you know. Is it, um. Possible to find a way to isolate. A si- specific multifamily builders. Let's say.
No, that is, that seems to be like spawn building. And it seems to be, I mean, one thing I really firmly believe about whatever we come up with. It better apply to me, this one could apply to everybody else. And as soon as you start making this.
Well, I'm just saying you're concentrating the people who are living and sleeping there all the time. Okay, I mean, which is kind of what I think you're getting at.
Well, but I mean, another way.
That would be spot zoning, Kate.
But another way to say that that wouldn't be spot zoning is that population is denser in an R fifteen than it is in an R three. So maybe it makes sense to exclude it when R fifteen or within a certain distance of an R fifteen.
But what are we talking about excluding? Because we already excluded the R fifteen and the R thirty and the C district from towers.
Was the point that.
Okay.
This woman brought up, Susan.
You have to allow some infrastructure in order to get coverage, there's.
Right, I'm not saying we're not allowing. Because. Look, Pam, it may, just as you suggest, show you that if that's what you do, you don't get any cellphone coverage.
Right.
So I, I'm like really getting tired, Tom.
Everybody's getting tired.
I'm getting cranky.
Oh, sorry, let's, so let's.
Why don't we clear the guy off, the, uh, the, uh, the remote guy who's been dying to talk.
Yeah, so, so we've got three people on Zoom, um, and I would please ask if your comments be brief. Shit, I got a fire at my house and. He's already, you know, he should go to the, he should go to the fire department right next door.
Oh, my God.
Well, we still got a forum here and we've still got people on, yeah.
I moved to adjourn. And like, I thought, I thought, I thought we were going to like, you know, wait until we had all the people who wanted to try to get into the meeting, get into the meeting before we.
Right, yeah, and I, and I think that's probably wise at this point, it's quarter past nine, so let's. Let's vote to, let's vote to continue the meeting. Until next Tuesday. Knowing full well that, that, that Jim won't be in attendance and Kate probably won't be in attendance.
Can you help us out by giving us a definite time start? Here's what we've done. We've done prepared information to.
Shut him off, please. The times of our meetings are always at the same time. They're always at six o'clock. And they go until whenever despite our.
Invested three hours. Listen, can you have us speak first at the start of the meeting?
Re- remove him, please. So. I'm try, what I'm trying to do here is get, get a vote to continue the meeting. To next Tuesday at six o'clock.
So moved.
Where we'll continue the discussion here and take more, more public comment. I'm hesitant to take more public comment at this point because we're so close to the public hearing. Where everybody's going to get a chance to get. Public comment, but we'll.
Do you want to say where we may? We may elect to take.
Yeah, why don't we do that? We may elect to take public comment on Tuesday, because we still have some more work to do here.
Yeah, I move that we continue this meeting to November twenty-second, Tuesday at six P M. Where we will. Further discuss the bylaws and we may elect to invite public comment.
And may I suggest? That you, uh, impose, let's say, a, a five-minute limit per speaker. Until everyone's had a chance to speak and then decide whether or not to hear people.
I'll, I'll set those ground rules at the meeting, Joel.
I think soon we need to vote. On the warrant, including this on the. I'm meaning warrants.
Okay, so, so now, so once we move to continue a meeting, that's it, right? We can't continue.
And I think the select board was going to meet on Tuesday, but now they'll probably meet on Wednesday.
Make sure that's on the, make sure that.
So they would meet next Tuesday and Wednesday for sure. I mean, what I'm concerned about is there will only be three of you and.
Well, we can still put it on the warrant and the language. You know, can be amended.
Right, but I mean, I just.
The planning board needs to vote to approve.
The warrant art.
It's not the whole bylaw, it's just the article.
That's the warrant article.
I mean, I think we should just do that tonight.
So while the motion's been made.
I'm, I'm leaving, actually.
Let's just do it next week.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Yeah, so the motion's been made, it needs to be seconded.
Alright, I'll send it.
Alright, so motion's been made and seconded. To continue the meeting until next Tuesday at six. All in favor? Okay, thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Joel, thank you, David.
Thank you, Joel and David.